Okay, good evening. I'd like to welcome you to our city council meeting. For the record, it is Tuesday, February 27th. It's one minute after six. We'll start with roll call attendance. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilor Milam?
Here.
Councilor Burnt?
Here.
Councilmember Palmer?
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Here.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Here.
Councilmember Borton?
Here.
Mayor DeVeard?
Here.
Item number two is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll all rise and join us in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is our community invocation. Tonight will be led by Pastor Troy Drake with Cavalry Chapel. If you'll all join us in the community invocation or take this as an opportunity for a moment of reflection. Thank you for joining us.
Thanks for having me. Well, would you pray? Well, God, we just want to thank you so much for this community that we have and the freedom that we have in the United States, God. And I just pray that we would all be mindful to protect those freedoms that are God-given. And, Lord, we are thinking about here tonight, at least I was here just a moment ago, about those who are homeless and hungry. And so, we're just praying for our city that those that are in that condition, that they could find their way to someplace where they can be fed and warm on these cold nights in the winter. And so, Lord, I just pray that our hearts go out to them and that you would care for them. Lord, we're also thinking about the safety of our community and just the craziness that's going on in places throughout our country. And, God, we just pray that you'd protect our city from that and that you'd give the police and those who protect us, that you'd give them just wisdom on things to watch out for. And, Lord, that you know that this madness would stop in our country and that we would truly love each other and love you, God. And, Lord, we're also just thankful for these folks here that are elected servants and that you would help them to make good decisions, especially here tonight in this council meeting. And, Lord, that you'd give them great wisdom on what to do on these small or large decisions that they make and that they would have our community's best interests at hand. So, Lord, would you just bless this time here and all the things that happen, the business of our city. And we pray that you bless all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Bless you guys.
Thank you.
Item number four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
We have added on to the agenda as item...somewhere. Madam Mayor, try this again. We are adding on to the agenda as item 12, an executive session pursuant to Idaho State Code 74-206-1B. And with that addition, I would move that we adopt the amended agenda.
I have a motion and second to adopt the agenda as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes?
Madam Mayor, the reason for the amendment that came at this hour is that the issue has arisen at the 11th hour as well. So, it didn't have an opportunity to be placed on the agenda when it was originally published.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
There were no signups for item five.
Okay, thank you. Item six is the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton?
Move that we approve the consent agenda as published and for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilor Milam?
Aye.
Councilor Burnt?
Aye.
Councilor Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, so we'll move right into our community presentations. I know that Blake here is ready to present on the Historical Preservation Commission, correct?
And company.
With his friend, Josh. I think that's Josh there.
It is.
Take the hat off.
Oh, sorry. I'm addressing.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for this opportunity to talk to you this evening. I'm Blaine Johnston, President of Meridian Historic Preservation Commission. This is Josh Everts, our Vice President. Our HPC was very fortunate to have retained all of our commissioners in 2017. Our members are a vibrant and diverse group and bring a lot of passion to this commission. Our commissioners took advantage of multiple learning opportunities to continue our development as a group, including sending multiple commissioners to the Idaho Heritage Conference and commissioners serving as volunteers for Preservation Idaho events. We've established a good relationship with Pete Laurent and Jamie Fiore with State Historic Preservation Office, who've had them come to meet with HPC or committees a number of times throughout the year. On top of this, we passed our certified local government evaluation from the State Historic Preservation Office, so we are in good standing for another four years. Commission also decided to change their meeting time and date to the fourth Thursday of the month at 4:30. This year, Ella Kramer, our Youth Commissioner, brought a new concept to the group, an essay competition for local high school students. We piloted implementation of this program at Meridian High School, the oldest high school in Meridian. Commissioners conducted a lunch and learn with Mrs. Hogan's class and asked students to compete in a research and essay competition. While we didn't have much of a turnout for this competition, we will continue to finesse this program to get local students more involved with historic preservation. HPC nominated the vault for an Orchid Award, which was awarded to Josh and Lori Everts contribution to historic preservation in April by Preservation Idaho. HPC nominated, excuse me, in 2017, Lila Hill also recognized, was also recognized with a Making History Award by Ada County Historic Preservation Commission. The Meridian Historical Society nominated Terry and Howard Foley's building at 850 North Main, the Mountain State Cell phone building, for a County Treasure Award. The County Historic Preservation Commission awarded this recognition to Terry and Howard in November. We received a grant to support the combination and printing of our, to combine our two walking tour brochures. We now have one consolidated brochure that covers all our properties. Any remaining separate brochures have been shared with Pine Trees School and local elementary schools. Our Tourer Buddy Historic Walking Tour app launched this spring. The MDBA agreed to support a portion of the ongoing costs for this app, and they now host an additional map, map on the app to highlight downtown businesses. Launching the Historic Walking Tour app through a partnership with the city and the MDBA increased visibility for commissions through print and TV interview coverage. We also developed coins and if for completed scorecards associated with the app. The Meridian Historical Society continues to be an asset for HPC in a number of city departments. Their records and time have supported staff in city clerk's office, planning department, public works, and more. Commissioners have been brainstorming with society members on how to increase membership and to make sure that the history center is open to as often as possible and to teach more people what volunteers have curated over the last few decades. 2018 goals. Want to determine an HPC logo, add an irrigation component to the walking tour app by working with Idaho High School, with high school National Honor Society students with the help of the Idaho State Historic Preservation Office. We would also like to get our downtown businesses more involved. Planning for the theme of this year's Preservation Month in May to be storytellers, which can bring together a lot of HPC programming goals under one umbrella. Thank you for your time this evening, and we'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Little Roberts?
Not a question, but just a thank you. I'm fairly new to being with the commission and I'm just absolutely amazed at all the Historic Preservation Commission accomplishes and their passion for our history and things. So, thank you very much. I look forward to continuing and learning every time there's a meeting. It's just been very, very impressive to be working with them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh?
Blaine, Josh, when you guys came and gave us the update on the app, you had mentioned that the coins were numbered. There's a limited edition. I'm just curious, have they all been distributed? There's a lot of people here in the audience. Has someone, after testifying tonight, wanted to go and take advantage of that? Is that something that's still available?
The coins are still available. We have not officially launched the coins yet. We are hoping to do that in March and then hopefully, really hopefully, get a good turnout May during Preservation Month. But if people use the app, take the tests, go through, we have a record of who does that, then the coins are available for those people to come get them.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt?
Are these challenge coins?
They are challenge coins.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
I like it.
Any other questions or comments? We appreciate all you're doing. You're making, learning more about our community and its roots, fun. So, thank you for doing that.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, item 8B is under Transportation Commission. Good evening, Mr. Ballard.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor DeVeard, councilmembers Little Roberts, Borton, Palmer, Burnt, Milam, and Cavanagh. Appreciate the opportunity to appear and present the report of the Transportation Commission. I currently serve, and it is my privilege, as the Chair of the Transportation Commission. In looking at our members, if I can use a baseball term that I'm familiar with, I would say we have a strong bench because we have very diverse experiences with the members on the commission. We have two traffic engineers, construction, or road construction specialists, if you will, member from the banking community, two attorneys through no fault of my own, and then one that I think is unique is an advocate of the bicycle community. And it goes without saying, and I think it's a unique opportunity for our youth members of the community, and I would compliment the mayor and the council to structure that opportunity for the youth to get involved in city government. Overall, the commission, we have an opportunity to talk about the integration of different modes of transportation. And besides the members, we have ex-official members that come from the highway district, from law enforcement, and also transit. So, there's a lot of smart people there, experienced people. And we have an opportunity to discuss with them diverse issues that affect our community, some of which are prioritization of the projects, roads, sidewalks, and also pathways. And again, I'll talk about the challenges that our youth or young pedestrians have, school kids getting to and from school. Crosswalks play a part. We looked at an accident in a crosswalk. Speed, we have an opportunity to make suggestions for speed studies, and they come back, and we plug that in. And so, that gives us an opportunity to make advice or comments. We're not a decision maker, and so we can pass along some comments to you. One that was interesting, and I think that is exciting for the community, is transit and VRT. We had an opportunity to do a field trip, take a bus ride, if you will, and see the new facilities, and maybe get a glimpse into the future of what transit can do for this community, particularly Meridian. And there's always the traffic challenges. One that was interesting, well, not interesting, but kind of frustrating is the gridlock at 69 in Overland, getting onto the freeway, and having a conversation with ITD, which you have as well, but the ideas that they have maybe to ease that congestion. And it gives us an opportunity also to talk to neighborhoods. And we've had a couple of occasions, people coming and making presentations and having a conversation with them as well. So, it is an opportunity for people to make, or at least have one more voice with members of the government, the city government. And so, again, I would close and talk about it's an opportunity to provide community service, and it's a privilege for me to have been here for four years. God willing, I'll make a fifth year. Questions that you may have?
Thank you, David. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh?
Just a comment, if I will. I really want to echo Commissioner Ballard's comments about that commission having a true deep bench of subject matter experts. To me, it totally represents what we want in a citizen commission. These are caring citizens who have a strong expertise in the field. And moreover, they deal with media issues. And what I love is that every meeting they show up, and they've done their homework, they're prepared to talk about the agenda and have some very insightful questions. And I just want to thank Commissioner Ballard, and I know we've got a couple other commissioners in the room.
Mr. Lewis is here.
Yeah, Stephen Lewis there in the back. Appreciate your work, appreciate your commitment. Also, I want to thank Caleb. I think it's important to note, Caleb does a phenomenal job of preparing for each of these meetings so that when our commissioners come in, they can be ready to act. And it's just, I think, a great example of what we've got going on in our community. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
One quick question. Can you give us the real summary process for one of the items that's later on in the agenda with the transportation priorities list and the commission's review of that, kind of the process you go through in reviewing and bringing that forward with your recommendation?
You bet. Mr. Borton, so Caleb does a good job of, I would say, two, if not three, meetings before a discussion of the prioritization. So, he has a spreadsheet of roadway projects, pathway projects, intersections. So, he has that list and comments to the site. So, we have a month, two months to be able to study that and also to get a fuller understanding. And then, in this last session, Mr. Lewis stepped up and reshuffled the deck, if you will. But he went through and based some of his own, his traffic experience. He said to me, this is the prioritization, and made those comments and made the case for it. And so, what came out of that was that recommendation because we had an opportunity to look at each project, not just say, okay, what's the top 10? What's the top 12? Do we want to shuffle, or would we shuffle one up or one or down? And so, it is an opportunity to do a studied review, Mr. Borton.
Okay. That's helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, good, thanks.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt?
As the newest member of this body, I have a question, just out of curiosity. What is, what is your interaction with ACHD or ITD?
Professionally or through the commission?
The commission.
Okay, well, because part of my practice is transportation law. But, so Sean Martin is an ex-official member, attends virtually every meeting. And so, to interact, if we're looking at a project, we can ask for some background. What are the policies on that? What would ACHD do or may do? He doesn't make the decisions, but with his experience, he can explain the process of getting an issue before ACHD, the process of how it'd be studied and reviewed. We didn't make a speed request to him, but like, for instance, signage. We've looked at a couple of situations where students are overcrowding, or let's say exceed capacity of the street and the sidewalks. So, he can explain the signage policies and what it would take maybe to get notice out there. So, if I say he's a liaison, but we can make a communication to him, I think that not necessarily is heard, but is noted, and he can carry that back to his people and to his supervisors. And I think it gives the city, I want to say a voice, but you're the voice.
Right.
That gives us an opportunity to have one more dialogue with him as a member of ACHD.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your service. Sometimes, transportation can be onerous in its detail, and there's, there's limited dollars, and most of our roads are transportation corridors for not just our cars, but for everyone else's as well. So, it's, it's a daunting task, and we thank you and the entire commission for the attention to detail that you give it. We appreciate that. Okay, item 8C is our fiscal year 2017 audit, and I will turn this to our CFO and have him introduce, Kevin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Again, first off, I want to say thank you for allowing us to present to you the fiscal year 2017 audit report and the results. Today, we have Kevin Smith, a partner of Aid Bailey, our independent audit firm who conducts our annual financial audit for the city. So, before I invite him up here, I just want to take 12 seconds and say a quick thank you. Again, thank you, Mayor, for the leadership and with the team, and thank you to the council for actually getting us the staff that we need to make sure that we have a successful audit. You know, it might start in the finance department with establishing the procedures and the policies for the city to follow, but it's your 458 employees that actually executes the financial transactions. We just kind of help oversee it. So, I just want to say thank you for that opportunity to have the quality employees that we have. Without that, we wouldn't be able to present to you a successful audit report. I don't want to take all of his thunder. But again, I'm happy to say that we have a good audit. Just want to say thank you to everybody and thank you guys for the funding. And with that, I'll go ahead and bring up Kevin to present to you the 17 results. And just to let you know, the audit report will be available to the citizens tomorrow morning on the website. So, with that, I'll bring up Kevin.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Kevin Smith, audit partner with the accounting firm, Aid Bailey. There's a couple of things we'll go through tonight through the audit report itself. First of all, most important, we issued an unmodified or what's called a clean opinion on the financial statements, and that's always the goal when we start. And just also to note that there are other types of opinions that can be rendered. So, always our goal to issue an unmodified or clean opinion. Also, in your report towards the back is a, is a letter related to internal controls. And we don't, we don't audit for fraud, but we do assess the internal controls, the processes and procedures that are in place and how they're being adhered to. We do procedures, what we call walkthrough procedures, where we take transactions and we walk them through the system. And prior to that, we know what the process and procedures, the written process procedures are. So, we're seeing that those transactions are being adhered to in those processes and procedures. And we also have lengthy discussions related to the processes, procedures, the internal controls with management, and those who are, have access to the software system and to make transactions in that. And we're happy to report that through the audit process, we did not have any audit adjustments, and we did not issue any management comments related to the controls or the processes that are in place. There were two items that we did note in a separate letter that are related to what we call past adjustments. Because of the dollar amounts and the nature of those, management determined that they were not significant enough to record them. And they were both related to a construction project, so what's referred to as retainage on those projects. And so, even recording them would not have an effect on your fund balance. It would have only affected your balance sheet by increasing your asset to your construction in progress and then your accounts payable. And there was one in the enterprise fund and one in the general fund. So, those were, those were passed and were not made. Fund balances, you look at your financial statements, fund balance for both the governmental fund and the water and sewer funds, the enterprise funds, both had an increase in fund balance in the, in the current year. As we looked at the budget to actual, the amounts that you budgeted at the beginning of the year and then amended that during the year, the actual, your actual revenue exceeded your budgeted amounts, and your expenditures were less than your, your actual expenditures were less than your budgeted amounts. So, then having a positive outcome to your bottom line or to your fund balance. A couple of projects that are going on, the things that we noted during, during the audit and in the financial statements, in the general fund, the fund balance includes approximately $27 million of funds that are unassigned for future operations. The rest of the general fund, fund balance is reserved or assigned or committed to, to something. The sewer and water fund has approximately $47 million of unassigned funds, and the rest of those funds are assigned or, or related or connected to, to future projects. With the continued growth that you've had, there's always a need to improve your water and sewer systems, and that'll be ongoing as you continue to, to have the growth that you've had. And we looked at the, some of the graphs that were presented and your building permits, and we saw increases in commercial, residential, multi-housing. And so, there's growth in all those areas, and we'll continue to have that kind of growth. But with that, those improved facilities in your water and sewer, you also have improvements in your governmental fund related to your parks and recreation and those, those areas. So, September 30th, there were projects in process of approximately 25, $29 million related to your water and sewer funds to improve or replace those, the equipment and the wells and the lines. And also, in your general fund, there was about $4.7 million in, in process of projects that were related to your parks and improvements. And then also, related to those projects to complete them, you have committed about $18.3 million to complete those projects that were in place. And so, that just gives you an idea of some of the, the growth or where some of those funds are, are going. But with that, we'd like to, also, as Todd mentioned, we'd like to thank the staff, all those who help us in getting the information that we request. We know that we ask for a lot of information. They provide documentation, reconciliations of the accounts, and then we ask more questions, and they're very responsive, everyone involved. And so, we appreciate the time they put forth in helping us to be efficient during our audit process. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Well, I know your, your staff always has high remarks from our staff, has been very easy to work with. And, and the questions and seeking further information, always very kind about it. I met with one of, a newer member, and I found the questions very thorough and, and spot on. So, we appreciate that you continue to look at our finances and, and our financials and making sure that we are doing the right things. We have a great team. They not only have a watchful eye, they have an eagle eye. And sometimes, some might take offense to that eagle eye, but we know that's why we get a clean audit each year. So, thank you for working together with us to make sure we're doing what we say we're doing and should be doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Todd, any closing remarks? Todd, any closing remarks?
Madam Member, and members of the council, again, I'm going to reiterate what Kevin states. Uh, you know, his team has helped us over the last 15 years. Rita is our sole leader on our audit. She's been leading us for, uh, 20 years on the, or 15-plus years on the audit. Uh, with her leadership, her guidance, uh, she's kept us, uh, pretty straight. She's kept us, uh, where we need to go. So without her leadership and the finance team and everybody else, again, I, I would extend again another thank you to her and everybody else, so. Again, appreciate your help, appreciate your guidance. With that, again, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Rita. I'm sure you even teach our audit team a few things, too, so. Thank you for joining us. Item 9A is a public hearing on H 2017 dash 0151. The applicant has requested a continuance, and, um...
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Board.
Pardon the interruption, but with the completion of the presentation of the audit, if I think it's appropriate...
Oh, we do need to accept it.
Take some action.
Yes.
And accept the audit report, and I would so move that we accept the audit report as presented.
I have a motion in a second to accept the audit report as presented. Need discussion. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All eyes motion carried. Item 9A is a public hearing, and the applicant has requested to continue to March 6th. Um, I, I guess I will ask staff to, to cite the request.
Sure. Uh, Madam Mayor, this specific, um, item, and then actually the one next to it, there are some timing issues there. They had prior commitment at, uh, a hearing in another jurisdiction. Didn't know what the date for that was going to be, and so they happened to be on the same evening as the hearings this evening, at the City of Meridian. And so he's requested that it be moved forward to next week so he's able to attend.
Okay, why did they choose the other hearing to attend? Is there anyone here in the audience that is here for either item 9A or B?
Oh.
Well, um... Counsel, what, what is your preference on this?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh?
Maybe a procedural question for either you or Mr. Nary. Traditionally, the, the applicant has the opportunity to introduce the project, and then we hear from the public. I guess, if the council wanted to open the public hearing, or Madam Mayor, if you want to open the public hearing, if we didn't continue it, how, how does that work procedurally?
So, Madam Mayor, members, uh, members of the council, this is properly noticed, so you can open the public hearing. In fact, I think you need to open the public hearing to continue it to the next week, anyway. You are certainly able to take testimony from the public. The problem is, is with that, with, all you will have really is the staff presentation, and nothing from the applicant, so the context of the comments may be lost, but I recognize there's a number of people in the audience, and they may not all be available next week, but you could legally take the, the testimony if you wish. It just may be awkward in trying to then backtrack, once the applicant's here, to address those specific concerns, but that's certainly within your purview.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer?
Madam Mayor, and, um, Josh, how were the dates for the hearing and council established?
Pretty quickly after, um, after their application is submitted, we send them out a date. Um, the applicant did reach out to us probably within, within about a week, um, but clerk's office does a pretty good job of sending out notices, uh, pretty quickly, once we establish a date. And so we weren't able to just move the date. It had already been established, and notices were already sent out for both of the, both of the projects, when they notified us that they'd like it to be continued, so. Did that answer your question?
I think, Madam Mayor, for me. So we tell them when the date's going to be. They don't say, hey, I'm available if we can have the public hearing on such and such date? So it's understandable why. But, but it was a week after we let them know what the date was, before they expressed any concern?
I, I would defer to, to the clerk to answer that.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, Councilmember Palmer, to answer that, it was shortly thereafter, yes. When we established these dates, or this date, I should say, um, both of these applicants, it was right after, within that week period, that we had sent the publication, um, asked if we could move the date, and at that point, to move the date would be to republish and renotice, and then you've got two publications essentially happening with one on this date and one on the next date. So, after we publish is when we enter that period of continuance request. It was shortly thereafter, but we'd already passed that, that timeline to, to pull the publication, as it were.
So we had already published?
Correct.
Is there not a way we can put on our agenda so that people know as well as next door that this has been requested to continue?
And I, I might ask for Mr. Nary's help in terms of what we can, what we can and can't put on the agenda, but I will say for Harper Ridge, uh, specifically, uh, we did, um, publish that on next door, to continue its request.
Mr. Nary, is, is that a possibility to put that on our agenda?
Uh, Madam Mayor, members of the council, you could certainly put that in your agenda. I, I guess really the message is, is what is, what do you want to communicate to the public? Because if you notice that a request has been grant, or requested, are you telling them to come or not come? Because if they don't come, on the presumption that'll be granted, and it isn't, then they'll have missed their opportunity. So that, that we've always been apprehensive and trying to notice that, because again, I don't know what the outcome's going to be. And so, we've always suggested to folks that they need to, if they really want to come, they need to show up in case the decision is not to grant that. If the council wants to make an, an action that one continuance will be granted routinely, then that's a better way to notice it up to the public, so they'll know we're not going to hear it, and it'll be moved to another date. But that's a, that's a, a bigger question, and so, yes, you can do it, but it might send the wrong message, and people still may not show up, and thinking that, that nothing's going to happen, so.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum?
It doesn't do anything to help tonight's meeting, but it seems though there should be some process where we ask the applicant if they're available before we publish anything, uh, for future meetings. Um, they could be out of the country. Uh, I mean, there are a lot of really good legitimate reasons for not being able to make it, and just assuming that just because we post it and notice it, that they're going to drop everything and be able to be here is very presumptuous. And, and I don't know if somewhere in the process, we can ask them first, say, we, you have 24 hours to respond. Are you available on this date? At least give them that opportunity to say yes or no.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer?
I, I agree. I think tonight, you know, we should definitely hear from the public, but that, at all possible going forward, you know, whether it's policy, or if it's a codified process, whatever we need to adjust to be able to facilitate not the inconveniencing of the citizens this way, and that they also won't be hearing from the applicant when many of their concerns, if they have any, maybe they're all supporters, um, of whatever it is. Just puts us in an awkward spot, at really nobody's fault, that could be solved if we're able to make this adjustment.
Both these developers, I, I will say, know the, the process and, um, the, the scheduling. These are not first-time, uh, developers. So, I, I think they, they know it is an automatic, in fact, that it's almost presumed that it will be. So, I, I think there's onus, um, on, on the applicant as well. I, I guess the, the question here is, to take testimony without hearing from the applicant, if there is any changes, um, might necessitate those that are here to, to come back to make sure that something hadn't changed. So, um, we, we can accept public comment, um, but it, it is without the presentation from staff and the applicant.
Present?
Staff could present, but again, it's, it's on the basis of what we have. So...
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum?
So basically, what you're saying is, we would have to be making a decision based on information that we don't have present. So, we can either continue it or make a possibly...
Mr. Nary.
Madam Mayor, I guess that wasn't necessarily a question from Councilmember Mylum, but you cannot make a decision without the applicant here. They do have an opportunity to provide testimony, present their project, and provide any rebuttal to whatever the statements are made. So, you will have to continue it, it's just whether or not you want to take testimony tonight from folks and if you can't come to, to next week, um, knowing, they're, they're knowing full well that it's maybe out of context, and it may not be relevant, depending on what the applicant may say or may be responsive to, but if they can't come again, this would be their opportunity to at least be heard.
Well, it would appear to let staff present this, and, um, so, uh, maybe I should start by saying, who cannot come back on March 6th? Okay? And, um...
It won't be clear to me until around March 5th, actually. This is the third, uh, date change for this agenda item, and each time that's an afternoon off work for me, and, uh...
Yes, I, I, I can't, I can't, um, take comment off the record, but what we'll do is, counsel, if, if there's no opposition, we will have staff present this, and anyone who wants to provide testimony and comment, um, will be invited to do so, knowing that we will have the applicant next week as well. So, Josh?
Wait with me just a minute, Madam Mayor.
Josh, why, why you look that up? The, the comment that the applicant has, um, continued this a couple of times, has there been a basis for that? Was that a planning and zoning?
Madam Mayor, I think I might be able to...
Mr. Clerk?
Answer that better than Josh Cavanagh. He might be able to supplement what I say. I don't know about the, the third, uh, three times and changing. This was, um, set on our February 6th agenda, kind of. Um, that was the meeting, if you recall. This was one of those items that the notice actually failed to go out. So it was on the agenda, but there actually was no notice, other than the agenda that this was going to be on. So we couldn't have the hearing at all on that date. Uh, our notice didn't go out. So, I reached out to the applicant and asked about this particular date before we set the date, uh, for February 27th, and he, the applicant at that time indicated, yes, that would be okay. We wanted to get, obviously, on as quickly as possible.
Oh, that's different.
Yep, so that's, that, that may answer, I think, some of that question. I don't know if there were any other circumstances surrounding, um, different dates, but that's all I'm aware of.
The first time was our fault. Uh, we did not get all of the notices sent out, um, so we couldn't have, uh, a public hearing. So we apologize. We, we understand. People have to rearrange their lives to, to come down here, and our apologies for that.
Do it this way, Madam Mayor. Give me just a second. Okay, so this is a, this is an application, uh, for a conditional use permit for 124 dwelling units in the CG zoning district, and for a preliminary plat consisting of 16 building lots, or storage lots, and two common lots on approximately 10.68 acres of land. The site is located at 3885 East Copper Point Drive. Moving down here, the history, a little history on this project. This property was annexed in 2002 as part of the Southern Farms subdivision. The comprehensive plan, future land use map designation for the property is mixed-use regional. The applicant, as I said, is, uh, requesting a conditional use permit for a multifamily, uh, development in the CG zoning district. That's a requirement of the UDC. As I said, it's for 124 dwelling units and 16 structures on approximately 10.68 acres of land. The units consist of one, two, and three-bedroom units. There are some specific use standards, uh, in the UDC specifically for multifamily developments. The applicant's project appears to, uh, generally comply with those. There are a couple of minor things they'll have to correct, that we'll catch with a certificate of zoning compliance, mostly the central mailbox, directory map, things like that. The landscape plan will have to be modified slightly to meet, uh, city code. Moving on to parking. Multifamily developments, off-street parking is required in accord with the UDC. It requires two parking spaces per dwelling unit, with at least one of those in a covered carport. Based on 124 units, uh, one, two, and three-bedroom units, a minimum of 238 parking spaces are required, of which 124 are required to be covered. The applicant's proposals for 248, and for 128, which exceeds the UDC requirement by 14 spaces. As I said, they're also proposing a preliminary plat, which consists of 16 residential building lots, four common lots, and two other lots, on 10.68 acres of land. And the smallest lot in that configuration is 11,514 square feet, and the average is 20,183 square feet. Access is proposed off of East Copper Point Way, two access points. And I'll show you a, an exhibit and a map, so we can visualize that here in just a second. A traffic impact study was not required per ACHD. Uh, as, as I mentioned, there's a, several minor things the applicant will have to correct with their landscape plan. Typically, a 10% open space is required. Uh, the applicant's proposing, uh, approximately 13% open space. That will con, be consist of, uh, common areas. Amenity is also proposed, our clubhouse, swimming pool, tot lot, and, uh, we allow for a 50-by-100 area to be added as an amenity as well. Uh, the Ridenbach Canal runs along the southern boundary of the site, because the centerline of the ditch lies on the property line, and it's a very large drain. The applicant requests a waiver, uh, which requires all irrigation, ditches, laterals, canals, drains to be piped, and city council has the ability to waive due to larger capacity. A six-foot-tall fence, open vision fencing, having 11-gauge, two-inch mesh or other construction equivalent, an ability to deter access is required along the Ridenbach Canal. Sidewalks are required to be provided within the development. The applicant shall provide detached sidewalks along the entire East Copper Point Way frontage of the property, and detached sidewalk along South Knapp Avenue. So getting into the exhibits here, so you can see where we're, we're actually talking about. I'm not sure why the exhibit map's not in there. Uh, but this is, uh, in the Silverstone Developments on the south side, just north of Southern Farms, so Cloverdale, uh, would be further out here onto your, the right or to the east. And this drive access here, Public Road, goes down into the Southern Farms Development, and then continues up this way to the Silverstone Office Park. This is a proposed preliminary plat with these 16 building lots and associated common lots. Landscape plan shows that they do exceed the landscape requirements for the, uh, both subdivision and the specific use standard set forth in the, for multifamily developments. They've provided some elevations or renderings to what the buildings may look like, uh, again... Again, some of this will be, have to be finalized with Architectural Standards Manual with their design review. We don't have a lot of detail as far as some of the materials, but we'll be further refined and ensure that it meets the architectural standards. Add some color renderings. With that, Madam Mayor, I'll stand for any questions you have. Staff is recommending approval, and you have an approval from, a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission as well.
Thank you, Josh. Counsel, any questions? For-
Madam Mayor-
Mr. Borton.
Just to maybe echo your comment or comments of other council members, the, in light of the fact that this, this application's getting continued, and Josh, you were kind of, kind of having to summarize a staff report on the fly because we know we aren't able to necessarily take action today, but for the purpose of ensuring some convenience for some members of the public that can't reappear on the 6th. In the perfect world, the greatest value is having the public comment at the same time and immediately following the applicant's comments, so to those of you who are able to come back, please do so. That is by far the best time to provide your public testimony and hear the response from the applicant as well with any up-to-date changes, so... Just if there's a, if there's an ability to testify again on the 6th or at a later date, please do so in light of today's somewhat summary process.
I'm taking to show you some context of what this property is-
Josh, turn your mic on, please.
Just- I need to show some context here, but it's taking a second to load, so... So, Madam Mayor, if I just may give you a little bit more context. So, this, this here, my, the hand is, is the Silverstone Office Park. This project here, directly to the, to the east of this is the Movado and Movado Greens and Silverstone Apartments project. Southern Farms and Muir Woods are to the south. Just for some context. As I said, it is owned CG with the rest of the Silverstone project, and we do allow for multifamily projects to apply for a conditional use permit if it has a CG zoning, and that's what the applicant's done.
Okay. I apologize, we're trying to get the record up here. So, who would, I guess I would just, I know people might have signed up, but I will just invite you forward if you would like to provide testimony tonight. Yes, sir. Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Robert Nielsen. I live at 3508 East Quinn Drive in Meridian.
Thank you.
I'm, I have some problems with this project, but what I'd like to suggest instead is a change in process. The original notification for this project, for the P&amp;Z hearing, was held during Christmas week, and we didn't get very many people attending because they weren't available. We now find a notice on, on Nextdoor saying that there may be a continuance, or there has been a continuance. There are a lot of people that are interested, most of whom are not here today. Now, if you decide to grant a continuance to next week, that's, I guess that's fine, and that's what the current process may be, but I would like to suggest that a more appropriate process might be to postpone the continuance for two weeks or more, so that the public within 300 feet can be notified about the new meeting, so that we can get the interested parties here, rather than rely on Nextdoor or word of mouth to try and let people know, hey, by the way, it wasn't tonight, it's going to be next week. So, with that, I'd like to just, just stop and ask that you consider a change in process or make the continuation a little longer, so people can be notified appropriately, so they can attend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Brian Stalcup. I live at 3772 East Roger Drive in Meridian.
Thank you, Brian. You want to pull that mic over? Yes, thank you.
Perfect. I want to take a minute to reflect on where we started tonight. We had some, some comments from the Historical Committee, and they did a great job at talking about kind of where some of the things that are changing in the town and some of the things they're doing to preserve that. I moved here from the opposite end of the country, and I have to say, I've been to all but three states, and this is the best one yet. That being said, I remember kind of the reasons why I left some of the places that I was before, which is kind of what brings me here tonight. The sprinkled-in, very high-density housing in places that it just doesn't seem to belong places a lot of burden on the residents. I'm particularly concerned about this one, because I have not only kids in the schools, but I live to where these people's balconies are going to be probably hanging over into my yard, and I think that that is terrible. The map doesn't really do justice what, what's actually going to happen. So, this property, I don't know if everybody's seen it, but if you, if you go to the location between, if you know where the Citibank is, it's between Citibank and Ridenbach Canal. It's much smaller than, than it looks on the map. On the map, it looks like some 500-acre plantation, but it's really not that. It's a very small piece spritzed in amongst some other commercial-type construction. Copper Point is a very narrow road that has two 90-degree bends in it coming off a knapp, and for, I would imagine everybody here has been on Eagle Road in the morning, and you may recognize that as terrible. The southeast corner there, where Movado is under construction, is going to impact that area pretty dramatically, I would say, based on that there's nearly 700 dwellings there. This adjacent project is going to be an additional 124, and as far as the traffic flow goes, we have, excuse me, there's very limited options. You have, you have Overland, and you have, which, which you have Copper Point that dumps out on, and then you don't really have another way to go the other direction without turning around and cutting through either Muir Woods or Southern Farm. And when you do that, that doesn't sound like too big of a deal, because it's, it is a public street, yes, that's true, but you're going to encourage that type of behavior because there's no other way to make the turn coming out of there. So, when you come back through there, you're not just going through some neighborhood streets. You're going right past a park, right across the bridge, you're going to go past a pretty high-traffic area right during rush hour, where there's lots of kids out there, and it's just a big disaster. So, the, the traffic piece and the fact that there's no traffic study required, I have to wonder, is that in consideration of the other items that are happening in the adjacent properties? Because it seems like there's quite a lot going on over there, and it might warrant that. We have power engineers, we have, immediately across from that, we have Citibank, we have another, another few other fairly large, high-traffic places that, to try to see all those folks try to pile onto that little tiny road to either go east on Overland or try to get back to Eagle to go north, or to the freeway, is just going to be, I think, a lot more than, than maybe the map even, even dictates. It's, I do the travel every day, and I have to say, it's, it's quite a burden on everybody down there, so I appreciate everybody's time, and I really appreciate getting the, getting the chance to share some of my concerns, which are mostly around the, the traffic patterns and kind of changing the plan for what the property was used for. So, I appreciate that, and I'll do my best to come back on the 6th.
Thank you so much for your testimony this evening. Any questions from council? Mr. Palmer.
One quick question for you, and I apologize if you did say, what would be your preferred use for the property?
The adjacent properties have kind of similar, similar small business uses right there across from Citibank, so anything that would have, have small business, non-residential type area that would limit the amount of track, traffic, and also discourage street parking, because that road is so narrow, but I think it would be, it would be nice to see some, some other type of businesses that are similar to what's already there in place. I think that would be great.
Thanks.
Hey, any further questions from council? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Okay, any further testimony? Yes?
Madam Mayor, council members, if I may be recognized, my client is Reverend John Mascroft of the Apostolic Bible Church. He just wanted it noted that he will return on the 6th, and by appearing, he's not waiving his opportunity to comment. At the, at the risk of cutting my nose off, I just wanted to clarify that he would like to come back and have the opportunity to put it in context and speak with the developer. So, with that, I just was asking for the permission to return.
Oh, absolutely. You can always return.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, additional testimony. Okay, we, we will, I'm sorry, did someone raise her hand? We will hear this again next week, and so, we apologize again for the inconvenience and, but look forward to seeing you next week. Counsel? Yes, Mr. Kavner.
I move that we continue the public hearing.
Madam Mayor, I move that we would continue the public hearing for Harper Rivers subdivision H-2017-0151 to March 6th, 2018.
I have a motion and a second to continue this item, 9A, to March 6th. All those in favor, say aye.
Sorry, just maybe a question for everybody about the date, if I could.
Okay.
Sorry. One of the pieces of testimony that we did here contemplated continuing to a later point in time, so that we could properly notice it, renotice it. I didn't know if that was something the council had an appetite for, or if we just wanted to continue it to the date requested by the applicant.
Counsel, any preferences? I, I guess for those who saw it, requested to continue, might have the impression it would be next week. To do it two weeks out might be awkward. I, I don't know. Counsel, any opinions?
Madam Mayor, I-
Mr. Borton.
-always just continued without renoticing and publishing and, and all of that when a continuance comes, and it's been incumbent upon the applicant or members of the public to, and through Nextdoor, to spread the word and share the new dates, so I'm comfortable with doing that.
Yes, well, we'll ask that the residents that are here, please share it with your neighbors and let them know that we'll be hearing this next week, so... And if need to, we can always continue it another week. Thank you so much. Okay, item 9B, also a public hearing, H-2018-0010. It's a public hearing for Gramercy Vacation. This, too, has been requested to continue, and Mr. Clerk, I imagine this was continued because of the, the public noticing? No?
This was not one of those items, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so, Josh?
Madam Mayor, this, this is, I believe the applicant is at the same NAPA hearing as the previous project. Same situation, it happened about the same time. We sent out the notices, then once we've published, they ask it to be continued or to change the date, in which, which case we've already posted it in the paper, and so, we're asking for it to be next week, so they can attend.
Is there anyone here in the audience for this item? Okay. Seeing none. Counsel, this has been requested to continue until next week.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we continue H-2018-0010 to March 6th, 2018.
Sorry.
I have a motion and a second to continue item 9B to April or March 6th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
When these come back, and this one in particular, the applicant will probably get some direction that one of the earlier comments to provide in their presentation is the explanation, maybe a little more detail on the continuance and what might have been more critical in NAPA than what is being addressed here, right? If it's a matter of Meridian just grants continuances willy-nilly, we don't do that at the expense of the public who, who plan on attending, and it would just be nice to hear that explanation. There must be a dandy good reason. We'll hear that next week.
Thank you. It's a good point. Okay, item 9C is a public hearing for H-2017-0095. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the next application before you is a request for annexation and zoning. This site consists of five acres of land. It's owned RUT Ada County and is located at 5960 North Linder Road, which is just south of the West Chinon Boulevard. There is no previous application history on this property, but there was some changes from the original application that was submitted for this site. It included a rezone application for the two adjacent parcels to the south, which have since been withdrawn from this application, and the concept plan originally depicted multifamily residential and townhomes on the rear portion of the site with commercial pads fronting on Linder Road. The commission requested the applicant change the development plan to move the residential component, which the applicant has done. The comprehensive plan, future land use map designation on this site is mixed-use community. The applicant proposes to annex and zone five acres of land with a CC zoning district consistent with the future land use map designation of a mixed-use community for this site. The applicant has submitted a conceptual development plan that depicts two pad sites that are less, that are a little less than one acre each, fronting North Linder Road, a north-south driveway, and a 7,000 and a 10,000-square-foot building with an outdoor plaza area between the two and associated parking on the rear three-acre portion of the site. The applicant has a potential tenant that would like to develop a dance studio and event center for dance recitals and performances at the rear of the site. Direct access via North Linder Road is not proposed, however, if in the future, when the site develops, if access is not available via a north-south baggage road paralleling Linder Road, an access via Linder may be needed. In this case, staff recommends it be a temporary access until such time as access is available from the properties to the north and south. Reason for this is so that the access is on Linder spaced out a little bit more, and they aren't so close together. At that time, the access would be removed. Cross-access ingress/egress easement is required to be provided to the properties to the north and south for access to the site and interconnectivity. There are no pedestrian walkways depicted on the concept plan along the north-south baggage road that separates the commercial retail uses from the arts and entertainment uses. Staff recommends a walkway is provided on one side of the driveway for safe pedestrian access and connectivity. Conceptual building elevations were submitted, as shown, for the commercial structures fronting on Linder Road that depict one-story buildings with stucco horizontal siding and brick-and-stone veneer accents. Concept elevations were also submitted for the event center, and that's shown there on the right, proposed to be at least two stories in height, and CMU is the primary building material. All structures are required to comply with the design standards listed in the UDC and in the Architectural Standards Manual. The commission did recommend approval of the revised plans and the development plan. Trevor Gasser testified in favor of the application. He is the applicant. Sally- Sally Reynolds testified in favor and read a letter from, uh, Greg Reynolds. There was no one that provided testimony, uh, testimony in opposition or commented on the application. Written testimony, um, was received from Trevor Gasser, the applicant, in response to the staff report. And then there were some additional folks that testified, um, during the first go-around on the hearing before the concept plan was revised. Uh, those folks were Justin Carpenter, Jeremy Evans, Karen Gallegos, Sally Reynolds, and a petition signed by adjacent homeowners opposing the development. The key issues, um, at the last hearing, um, in favor of the revised plan. The commission, uh, did make a change to the staff recommendation. They included a requirement for a pedestrian walkway to be provided from the sidewalk along the north-south baggage driveway to the entrance of the building proposed on the east side of the site, and that, that's the dance studio and the event center. There are no outstanding issues for city council, and there has been no written testimony received since the, uh, commission hearing on this. Staff will stand for any questions.
Counsel, any questions for staff? Okay, is the applicant here? Good evening. Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Trevor Gasser, uh, with T-Meg Properties. Business location is Sunnyford East, five hundred South, Suite two hundred in Battlefield, Utah. Madam Mayor, council members, thanks for, uh, this opportunity to, uh, present my project to you tonight. Sonia did a good job on, uh, explaining what, what I'm trying to do here. I just wanted to go a little more in detail on what happened prior to, to tonight. So I, I came in, uh, on the first meeting, uh, planning and zoning meeting with the entire, uh, parcel that is shown, uh, of eight acres. And, uh, five acres of that, I was trying to do multifamily, uh, one hundred and seventeen units, and then, uh, retail paths along, uh, Linder, that front Linder. And I had, uh, an outcry of the residents, uh, not liking the multifamily that I proposed, and the planning commission felt like we needed more multifamily in Meridian, but not at this location. And so I went back to the drawing board and tried to figure out, um, something that, that would work, uh, for myself and, and for the residents. I had another, um, neighborhood meeting with the residents and showed them this plan and didn't have any opposition at that point in time. And so, um, anyways, I, I have a tenant that is looking to do a dance studio on this back three-acre portion. I dropped, uh, the, the parcel to the south and just left that. It was already zoned LO. I have a potential preschool daycare. That's going to take about one point four, eight, three acres in the front there, and then I will develop the other parcels, uh, with office. Um, the dance studio wants to do, uh, a dance studio and then have an event center to hold dance recitals that they feel like is much needed in, in Meridian. And, uh, I feel like I've, I've worked with the residents and, and heard what they said, and, and I've tried to, uh, comply with, uh, the zoning requirements, and I hope that you guys, uh, approve it tonight. And I'll just ask if you guys have any comments or questions that I can answer.
Thank you very much, and appreciate you walking us through the history of your application.
Sure.
Um, counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton. Burton.
I, uh, I don't have a question per se, but a comment. You know, Trevor, you know, awesome job. Um, I, awesome job on listening to the residents, awesome job listening to planning and zoning and coming up with a project that makes sense for that area. Um, so I just wanted to say kudos to you and your, and your team and, and for what you did. Just congratulations and thank you.
Thanks. I appreciate it.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burton.
So will the development of, of this site that's before us, the annexation, be accessed with the parallel baggage road that's depicted here?
Correct.
Okay, so it won't need direct access to Linder?
No, I, I mean, hopefully not. Um, if my proposed development develops to the south, then no. Uh, it, I will not be taking direct access off of Linder onto this parcel. If that makes sense.
It, it does.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, and I don't know, Mr. Nary, is that a condition of an annexation that the access come from a baggage road and not from Linder direct? And there's not a development agreement before us, but?
At least there's a, an access just where it stubs to the north.
Yeah, so I would be planning on trying to work with the developer of the Wynn Co. site-
Right.
-to, to gain access. I, I think basically right there is where they are showing an access point on, onto Linder, and so it, it, you know, it will connect right there.
Madam Mayor, is, am I missing, is the road to the south, though, to be built by you?
Yes.
Yeah. And that's your access?
Correct.
At least?
Yeah.
Okay. Sounded like there was comment about a necessity of direct lot access to Linder temporarily until a southern access is available, but you are the southern access.
I am. It, I, I don't own the property yet. I'm, I'm in the process of purchasing it and developing it. So if the rare chance that it didn't get developed, then I would need to take access off of Linder onto this site, but I don't foresee that happening.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burton.
Trevor, have you, have you spoke with the, uh, the developer to the north? I mean, are you?
I have not yet.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, I've been kind of watching eagerly-
Right.
-as to what's going to happen there, um, 'cause it is, you know, vital to my development, you know, to have that traffic and, and to have, uh, the Wynn Co. development go through. That, that is a big, that would be a big help to my development, obviously.
Okay.
Any, any further questions?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burton.
If, uh, if, if something, you know, changes with the property to the north, whatever the case, and I, I'm just hypothetically-
Sure.
-asking this question. Do you have, do you see a problem with your development? You know, with the access to the north? If, if that, if that, something may go sideways?
That wouldn't help. You know, I'll be honest. I, 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 I'm relying on having good access off of my north, the north portion of my property. You know, I mean, access is everything for retail tenants, and I'm trying to develop the two front pads. I don't speculate, and so I'm waiting till I have leases signed with tenants before I build those, those structures. And so, you know, as far as a, um, marketing point and, you know, I, tenants want that, that good access, so it is important to me.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burton.
So, would you be able, in your mind, would you be able to continue with your project if, and, you know, if you, if you don't have access to the north?
Uh, yes, I think I can make it work, but it, it will be more difficult, you know, just as far as, uh, marketing my project. You know, I mean, to have access on both sides. I, I went to, uh, ACHD and asked if I could put the access road in the middle of the two properties, and they said, no, that's going to be too close to the access that we already have for the Wynn Co. development. And so they said, no, we want you to keep it on, uh, the south side of the property that you're working on as well. So, that's why I've left it there. If not, I would have moved it to the middle and tried to have it in between both parcels. If that makes sense.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
So, Madam Mayor?
Mr. Nary.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, to answer Councilman Burton's question earlier, because there is no development agreement here, we have no conditions upon annexation. So really, all that's being requested is simply an annexation of this parcel with this zone. There's no plat attached to it, so there's no access that's being discussed or being proposed at the moment. So you will have an opportunity to discuss that at a preliminary plat, but, but again, the, any restrictions or desire for baggage road or whatever, if that's the council's desire, would have to be in a development agreement upfront. Otherwise, all you're, all you're left with is whatever's allowed in the CC zone, and then really an access question about the location in relation to whatever else is available. I think in our code, it does require council approval to have access to this arterial, so, um, you will have that conversation again. It's just if the baggage road is an issue of concern, that'd be the only way to assure that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, there were two sign-ups this evening, neither of which wanting to testify. Kelly Watkins in favor of the project and Doug Stewart in favor of the project. That was all.
Okay, is there any further, um, testimony? Okay, counsel?
Madam Mayor, may I interject, please? Um, regarding the discussion about a development agreement, um, staff is recommending a development agreement for this site. The provisions are included in Exhibit B of your staff report. So just, just wanted to clarify that. It ties the applicant to this, uh, development plan.
Makes sense.
And there are provisions in that agreement for access to the site also.
Madam Mayor, and, and to the, the provision that speaks to access, it says north and south? Is it, not to nitpick on a word, is it and or? For example, if there's access available to the south, is that sufficient to eliminate direct access to Linder? Or does it need to be? Both?
It can be either.
Either, okay.
Counsel, Mr. Burton.
Okay. Madam Mayor, to the, there was another, uh, proposed condition, and I don't know if the applicant had any concern with it, but it was in regards to the pedestrian connectivity? Okay, forgot to ask. I apologize.
Hey, anything further? Okay, any final remarks? Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burton.
It sounds like the recommended conditions that would go in the DA would provide some sideboards on the future plat that would come. That would address some of the issues access and tie them somewhat to this. It's depicted, correct?
That's-
It's not- It's not just an annexation blind.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Burton, it, it absolutely ties them to this development plan and has specific provisions for access.
Perfect.
And/or, Councilman Burton, and/or, north or south?
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir.
Want to restate?
Just state your name again for the record.
Sonia, but that development agreement will have something in, in there that says that I have, I can pull temporary access if needed?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
It's always good to clarify, right? Counsel, any further information needed? If not, I would entertain a motion to close.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burton.
Excuse me. I'd move that we close the public hearing on item H two thousand seventeen zero zero nine five.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on nine C. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burton.
I would move that we approve item H two thousand seventeen zero zero nine five to include the DA provisions as recommended by staff and clarified in, in today's comments to include the walkway as well, the pedestrian walkway that's been referenced in the applicant's in agreement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item nine C to include the items discussed with the pathway, the temporary access, and the baggage road. Any further comments? Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
All ayes must carry. Item nine D is a public hearing for H two thousand seventeen dash zero one four zero. Open this public hearing with staff comments.
Madam Mayor, members of council, um, this project before you this evening is the Timberline Subdivision. It is an application for preliminary plat. Site consists of approximately seventeen point three acres of land, just currently zoned R eight, located at six fifty five and seven thirty five West Victory Road. History on this one is in two thousand thirteen, the property was annexed and zoned as part of a city-initiated annexation from RUT to entirely R eight. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation for this property is medium-density residential. Um, just for clarification's sake, right off the bat, um, to fit it, make it look bigger, north is to the left, just for orientation's sake. Uh, so the proposed plat consists of fifty-eight building lots, seven common lots, uh, son seventeen point three acres, uh, to stay zoned R eight. Gross density of the subdivision is three point four dwelling, three point four one, excuse me, dwelling units per acre. The average slot size is eight thousand four hundred and ninety square feet. All of the proposed lots comply with the dimension standards of the UDC. In the existing recorded development agreement for the subject property, it required that all of the lots that, uh, are immediately adjacent to the Kentucky Ridge subdivision, which, um, the Kentucky Ridge Estate subdivision is here, as you can see in the text. So it required that all of the lots that abut be ten thousand square feet, they are. Uh, phasing plan is presented by the, by the applicant. Um, in the case, first phase of development will come from the south, and the second phase will include the Victory Road frontage. In an effort to ensure that pedestrian connectivity in the area occurs sooner than later, staff is requiring the applicant to construct the landscape buffer and sidewalk along West Victory Road with the first phase of development. Access to the property, uh, is proposed for this site via one access to Victory Road and a stub to the south, uh, to meet up with South Bearclaw Avenue. The applicant is also proposing an additional stub street to the parcel to the east that will connect, uh, to a future development. Sidewalks are required along all public streets. As I said, the applicant is proposing to construct a five-foot-wide detached sidewalk along eternal streets and a five-foot detached sidewalk along the entire frontage of West Victory Road. Uh, there are several lots that are encumbered by an existing easement. Any existing utility mains crossing the property that are no longer in use or needed must be abandoned, and any associated easements will need to be released or relinquished. Uh, the minimum for, uh, percentage for open space for developments that are five acres or larger is ten percent. As I said, this is a seventeen point three acre parcel, so one point seven three acres of qualified open space is required. That is what the applicant has presented this evening, so they meet that requirement. Uh, all developments consisting of, uh, like I said, five acres or more are also required to provide amenities. Uh, this, due to the acreage, it only requires one amenity. The applicant has indicated that they are going to provide a covered picnic area for the development. As you can see here, this is the landscape plan, um, and this graphic victory is to the north, um, and then the project comes further south. And on the last page of the landscape plan shows a large common lot in the southeast corner. There are some conceptual building elevations provided by the applicant. Uh, building materials appear to consist of a mix of a variety of wood siding, cultured stone, and our masonry with architectural shingles. Uh, as I said, commission did recommend approval of the project. Summary of the public hearing was the applicant, Penelope Riley, is in favor. Um, we did receive written testimony from Dustin Hilgert, who also commented in opposition at the public hearing. Uh, myself, Josh Beach, was the staff that presented the app, the application, as well as, uh, comments from Bill Parsons. Some key issues of discussion in the public testimony were density of the development and the quality of homes being used in the exhibits, questions as to whether those would be the actual homes built. Issues of discussion by the commission were, um, questions about irrigation. A question came up from the public testimony about sufficiency of irrigation water for the project. Additionally, the number and location of amenities was another concern. As well as location of the open space for the developments, going back to the landscape plan, uh, there's a couple of the landscape, open space lots are adjacent to, uh, Victory Road, and there are questions about the appropriateness of that. In the previous hearing, the applicant has since revised their plan, but it showed, it showed the lot here on the southeast corner as open space. It also showed a road being stubbed, and this would have been required to be a turnaround. That's no longer the case. They're showing a common driveway off of this, so that that's no longer relevant. There were some concerns from the Planning and Zoning Commission about getting a crossing over Victory, so there was a lot of discussion from Councilman, or Commissioner Yearsley, about whether or not to recommend the applicant provide a crossing on Victory immediately with the first phase. And so, I guess going down to commission changes to staff recommendations, the modified condition 1.1.7 to read as follows, "The applicant shall construct a stubbed sidewalk from the west property line eastward to an alignment with the sidewalk on the east side of Stoddard Road so as to provide a location for safely crossing to the east side of Stoddard on the south side of West Victory Road." And the added condition 1.1.8 to read as follows, "The applicant shall construct the entire landscape buffer and sidewalk along West Victory Road with the second phase of development." And removed one condition that was no longer applicable. There were no outstanding issues for counsel, and with that, I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Josh. Any questions from counsel? Yes, the applicant here. Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, ma'am. Penelope Riley, Post Office, Box 405, Boise, Idaho 83701.
Thank you.
I just wanted to note briefly that, as always, we appreciate staff's professionalism and assistance in getting these plats routed to be before you this evening. I'm here this evening representing Bailey Investments and the project team for Timberline Subdivision. The applicant and project team have reviewed the staff report and concur with the recommendations and conditions of approval. On the first page of the staff report, area that Josh went over is the list of all of the discussion items that were covered in the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, and I'm just going to briefly touch on all of them. So, irrigation water, the documentation was provided, and there is sufficient water available to serve the common lands, or the pressurized irrigation needs for the entire subdivision. The location and the number of amenities, obviously, we have four common lots, and the common lot along the east property line is the one that will have the community gathering area. We felt that was best location for that. It's the covered picnic area, benches, tables, whatnot. And as you know, the common lot turnaround, the turnaround in the common lot down in the southeast corner, that has been removed, the turnaround area, so we've taken care of that item. With regard to the phasing of amenities, there are two common lots that will be developed with Phase One. The first one will be at the southeast corner, and the second one will be along the east side where the community gathering area will be. We did submit photographs showing the proposed improvements to this community gathering area common lot. The project team heard Planning and Zoning Commission's suggestion about access to the north side of Victory and the east side of Stoddard, so as Josh described, we're going to put a step sidewalk in that will facilitate that movement. If you look at the overview of the area, there's full pedestrian facilities available from Stoddard to Meridian Road along the north side of Victory Road. The sidewalk and landscape on the south side of Victory Road will be constructed with Phase Two, with your permission. The pathway along the south boundary line has been added, as shown on the landscape plan, from Bearclaw to the southernmost common lot, and currently that path easement area is about nine feet wide. We recognize that that's a little bit too narrow, so we're working on the final plat now. We will at least bump that up to 10 feet wide with a five-foot wide asphalt pathway. It's not shown on the landscape plan at this time. There'll also be a pathway area from the knuckle, south to the common lot along the east property line, so there'll be two paths of access to that southern common lot. Because about seven homeowners or residents will be using the southern access. The remainder of the subdivision to get down to that common lot will probably traverse along the east side of the property. Let's see. The project team, as I stated, is in concurrence with the staff's recommendations and conditions of approval. The final plat for Phase One is in process now and should be submitted to the City of Meridian in the very near future. There are some easements that do need to be vacated. The applicant, his surveyor has submitted exhibit maps and legal descriptions for the vacations of those easements, and we're happy to facilitate the City of Meridian in any way possible to get that taken care of. I believe that since the City of Meridian is the holder of the easements, the vacation needs to originate with the City of Meridian. Just briefly, the alignment of the subdivision, if you want to see it the way it exists in reality, it's like an inverted L, so it helps to see it that way. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
So, exactly what is the percentage of open space for this proposed development?
Madam Mayor, Councilmen, we're right at 10%, which is the required minimum amount.
Right, right, right. Any way that we can bump that up to more than 10%? Is there a possibility that, on your end, that would make sense or be doable?
I think that probably, one of the, one of the challenges was the area that was consumed by the mandatory 10,000 square foot lots that had to be placed along the boundary of the Kentucky Ridge Estates, I believe is the name of the subdivision. So, we lost some potential development area because of those large lots, so the applicant is not present, and the project engineer is not here either. I believe that we would like to stay with it the way it is now, if possible.
Madam Mayor, oh, go ahead, sorry.
You know, I get that, you know, you're at the minimum, and I respect that. However, it, I always sort of cringe when I hear just minimum, you know, amounts, and just people, or developers, developing their, you know, their areas with the minimum amounts. So, if there's any way that you can increase that to maybe taking a lot somewhere, redesigning it just a little bit, so we can have some more open space, I think that that would be, you know, a betterment for our community and how it will look.
Madam Mayor, Councilman, so could you maybe, so what, if I understand correctly, what you're asking is if we create one more common lot?
Or in some way, make that common space bigger? I don't know exactly. Our, what we're seeing is a little bit different than what you, it's sort of skiddywampus. It's tough to know exactly where they are, what I'm looking at right now.
I understand.
And so, I don't know exactly where that would be. I guess there's a common lot, I guess would be on your paper on the bottom.
He's got the arrow.
Right there, I see that.
Oh, okay. Yes, sir.
So, I don't know if we necessarily need to make another common lot, but just make one of those common lots bigger. If that would be, that would probably be the easiest way, in my opinion.
I'm just trying to figure out your common lot in the very end of your, well, I guess it's the southernmost area, and how it connects along the backside of the lots, and then it goes, so you won't even see that.
Are you talking about the east-west alignment, access pathway between Bearclaw? Yes, that bottom common lot is in the southeast corner, so there is a very narrow strip that provides access between Bearclaw, where it stubs into the subdivision below us and runs across to the, to the common lot in the southeast corner. Is that what you're asking about, madam?
Yes. So, what's on the other side of that? Is that just hidden? How is it going to have vision onto it?
I do apologize. I'm not sure I understand. We're going to have, there's a pump station that's going to be constructed in the southeast corner for the pressurized irrigation system, and so there'll be this, this east-west nine foot wide easement that we're going to put a pathway in. We're going to have both water and pressurized irrigation in that. So, I think the main reason that went in was because it would provide a corridor for facilities. Then Josh discussed the pathway. I might be out in the weeds somewhere. I apologize if I am.
So, you have not necessarily a park or open space, it's your pump house and...
Oh, no, it's going to be a grassy area. It'll be, it'll be developed as an open space. I think the pump station's going to be back in that little knob, and they don't take up a lot of room. We just have to, we have to put it over in that corner because our water's coming out of the canal.
I am still trying to figure out how you have vision into that, that open space.
I see what you're saying. It is kind of hidden, isn't it? Down at the corner, it's at the end of a private road or private access driveway. Well, we've, what we tried to do was distribute the common area throughout the subdivision, so we have one in the very southeast corner. We have one about midway up on the east side for, in Phase One, which will have the community gathering facilities. We have another one along Victory Road in the northeast corner, and then we have one, one block off of Victory Road on the northeast corner. And so, we've got, we tried to do a zone treatment, so there's two common areas in Phase Two, two common areas in Phase One. It's an unusual geometry that we're dealing with. The site is very unusual. So, and we had these pre-existing sewer and water facilities that were constructed when the, the adjacent subdivisions were developed. There was a development agreement that was created that partly drove the 10,000 square foot lots along the perimeter, but it also drove these additional sewer and water facilities for the benefit of the neighboring subdivision. So, we parked the second common lot for Phase One in the area where we would continue to have easements for utilities that would be outside of the street right-of-way. And maybe, if I'm understanding, it is kind of hidden. It's going to just serve this bottom corner, really.
Well, it's not just kind of hidden, it is hidden. I just don't see the, I'm concerned that that's just a pocket for mischievous behavior.
I understand what you're saying. I've, I've figured out what you're talking about. I apologize it took me so long to catch up. So, we would want to keep this common lot anyhow because it, I mean, there's, it's, but maybe, would it be, would it satisfy the council if we put another common lot in a little bit northern, more northern in Phase One? Would that provide you with the more visible common lot area that you're looking for? So, I would say perhaps on the west side of Bearclaw, or it's actually currently labeled South Winnipeg, maybe something in the vicinity of Lot 11 or 12, so up close to the, to the phasing line on the west side of the street. So, in Phase One, we'd actually end up having three common lots. Two of them would be immediately adjacent to the public right-of-way and be more visible because, if I'm understanding correctly, it's the visibility of the common area that you're, you're driving at.
It is a safety concern, and I'm not trying to redesign your plat. I just have a concern about that back corner and the safety it brings to that area.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Being on an HOA board that has a significant border with a canal that has a pathway, I can tell you that all these pathways along canals that we're requiring and supporting being built are pockets of mischievous behavior, as we've replaced a fence along it many, many times, and they never last 24 hours. And so, I, I look at this and I think, holy cow, what a weird shaped piece of property. Take this, I mean, imagine telling somebody, take this, and now comply to everything that Meridian City wants, and now find a way to make it profitable, and then bring it before our council to redo it. I think it's amazing that it was able to be designed at all, let alone find a way to make every one of us super happy about it.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I respect that this is a very difficult piece of property, and I understand that, and trying to fit everything in there. Kind of going back to what Councilwoman Burnt said about the minimum open space, I would, it's kind of what I was going to go to, and yes, we do have minimum requirements, but when, when we have, we also have a lot of great developments that come forward with more than the minimums, and a lot, those are really easy yeses sometimes, you know? I have a term for those, like, I kind of look at this one, and I call them minimalist developments. They'd have the minimum everything. And my comment was going to be about amenities. So, you've got a patch of open space over here, and a patch over there, and a patch over there, and a picnic table. And so, I try to look at something like this, and yeah, it's hard, it is a difficult piece of property, but there's got to be a better way to make this a nice development 10, 20 years down the road. You know, when everything's new and the homes are new, it's going to look, you know, even though it has a minimum everything, and the way I look at these type of developments is, you know, 10 or 15 years down the road, they kind of become the place nobody wants to be. I don't want to call it a ghetto, but they just need to have some character, and I find this lacks all of that.
Madam Mayor. If I might chime in on our minimums, I don't know, but at some point in our history, council decided that we were going to have minimums that would create a quality project. And if this council feels like what the city has put in code as a minimum isn't, doesn't make a project a quality project, then we should change that. But to, time and time again, to fault the developer for meeting our requirements as to what we have said will create a quality project, I think is super hard on all the people that have to pay for these and then come before us. If we think that needs changed, then we should change it, but if they meet it, then we shouldn't complain about the fact that they met our minimum.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Councilwoman Palmer, I've been saying we should change it for a long time, so let's put that on a future agenda.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Okay, so we're talking about the possibility you said in the 1112 area, would, since you mentioned it, and now that we're all getting on soapboxes, would you be able to put lots back where you have the common lot and put it there so that it's more...
I understand what you're saying, Madam Mayor, Councilman. Um, uh, I- I believe that that is an option. Uh, this- this corner piece down in the southeast is pretty generous in size. So we could still have our corridor for the pressurized irrigation line to come out and start its process of routing through the subdivision. So what you're asking is that we convert this bottom common lot to a residential lot and move the common lot to a different location.
Madam Mayor. And I- I don't want you to have to lose lots if you don't have to, um, to be able to- to get it through our body here. So if- if- if that's something we're able to do, I don't know how- what the process is, if we can say if she can do that, great, or if we have to continue it and have a different look.
I think the- the problem is that southern border is where Kentucky Ridge is, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So she has a requirement of a 10,000-foot lot. Which further complicates it.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
So meaning that they would have to, really if they exchanged that, they'd only, they'd lose one lot, having to have a bigger lot down there to eliminate two lots up here.
Madam Mayor, if I might please, today I emailed a chart, or yesterday I emailed a chart to Josh that had the common lot breakdown in it. Oh, it's in right here in the corner. Josh, can- can you see what size that common lot is in terms of square footage? It's Lot 9, Block 1.
Madam Mayor, looking at that plot, it says about 23,352 square feet.
I believe, it appears that we have sufficient space to- to, um, keep the irrigation facilities in that lot and still meet the minimum 10,000-square-foot requirement. So, um, I think we'd be okay there.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, sorry, Warren. I wondered where the voice came from.
I try and keep quiet most of the time, but, uh, I did wanna make mention 'cause I think it's pertinent to the discussion that's going on here. So there's a sewer and water line that comes up off of Victory Road through the common lot that you see there off of Victory. That's a 30-foot-wide easement for our sewer and water trunk that goes up to serve Biltmore. It is also along that boundary back through that common lot on the southern end. So there's a 30-foot-wide swath of easement that you can't plant anything except for bushes and is gonna have that, one on the south is gonna have to have a gravel access road or a- a- a access road that can be driven on by a truck in order to get access those manholes back there. So that's just something to keep in mind. It's a- it's a- it's a limiting factor in how that has to all be put together.
So that's really not a greenway, pathway?
You can plant grass over it as long as there's not a manhole. But if there's a manhole anywhere in there, which there is on the southern portion, we have to have drive ability to get to that manhole. So that one on the south, we will have to have a 14-foot-wide gravel minimum. I mean, it can be grasscrete or some other kind of- of, uh, roadway that will support our trucks, but we have to have the ability to drive our trucks on that to get to those manholes to do the maintenance and cleaning on them.
Madam Mayor. This side over here. If I- if I can also chime in, uh, to tie on to that as well. There will be some fire department access issues with that back lot as well. So we would also have the same. We gotta be able to get a fire truck back there. And if it's deeper than 150 feet, they will need some kind of a turnaround on that property.
You'll need to get a fire truck back to the pump house?
No, to the, if you- if you turn it into a residential lot, we'll need to get, be able to get a fire truck back there.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I might address the fire department comment. It's just that access driveway to the line where the start of the common lot is, I think that's just a little short of 150 feet, so, um...
Right, and then we need another 150 feet from where the road ends to be able to get around the structure that's there.
Okay, so that is not a pathway, that is actually a road.
We had planned to put in an ax- shared access driveway and a designated asphalt path, walking area. Um, wherever we're, I mean, obviously we have to dodge the underground facilities. So, um, I think that's, um, uh, this is entertaining. I'm having some fun here. So, um, so it- it sounds to be like maybe we can't let go of this as a common area for a variety of reasons. So we would wanna move, we would wanna add another common lot. It sounds like that's the most reasonable option.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
And bear with me through this thought process. I- I understand that we have opportunities and I can't remember off the top, we have the distances from, for example, City Park, um, to where we can have a reduction in amenities. I don't know if this is close enough to Bear Creek to justify that. And if a, I know we've already had concerns about the lack of open space, but if- if we're allowed to require less than the 10%, if that s- southernmost lot was able to be bigger instead and reduce the amount of open space required because of its proximity to Bear Creek anyway, instead of just fitting it there just to have it? Let them make that building lot or that lot bigger and fill in that space instead of creating a random mischievous area?
Madam Mayor.
I don't know if that's even something we could do.
I could, just from staff's perspective. It, obviously there's some design challenges with this back corner. It- it made a lot of sense initially when we discussed this, for that to be a common lot and for a pathway to go through there, since there's an existing pathway to the Biltmore subdivision just to the south to continue that. Um, and as- as Warren said, there's a- there's a 30-foot easement in there. And typically we, I shouldn't say typically, but at times we have, um, allowed developments to put their- their pathway, ensuring that it's drivable by those folks that need to access it as a pathway. And so I think that's part of the reason staff was recommending that that happen that way. Call that part of their open space. It's just some perspective from staff.
Madam Mayor. CJ, can you make it so I can draw on here? So is it legal or possible to let them make this lot this big and then have their driveway go through? Reduce the 10% to just make that go away? Since they're so close to Bear Creek?
Madam Mayor, you're talking about the minimum 10,000-square-foot lot requirement that we have adjacent to the subdivision?
Madam Mayor, right. If- if- if it has to be a minimum size anyway, if that, that one could just be huge and eliminate that area as a concern for being in a dark back corner and then, 'cause this is gonna be a paved driveway up here, right?
Yes.
So if that was just extended because you have this huge lot, have a more valuable lot, it would eliminate a dark corner. It doesn't, I understand, you know, the mayor's point that it- it's a complicated piece to be part of a common area, park amenity anyway. If we can not require 10%, given the crazy shape of the property and how close it is to a huge park that the city owns.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burt.
I think that, uh, did the chief say that we, that's not possible? Did he get the fire- the fire trucks back there? I think that's what he said.
Madam Mayor, i- if I might, um, I think the direction you're going was to- to take that access drive and- and run it deeper down into that Lot 9 so that we do meet fire department standards, if I'm understanding you correctly.
Madam Mayor, and that might pull it out of- out of the fire department standards 'cause then would that end up making it so it would require ability to turn around?
Mm-hmm. You'd need a hammerhead or something.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, uh, Councilman, they would probably put a hammerhead in like she was talking. There's options other than a big cul-de-sac that they can do there.
Okay.
To- to meet the fire department's requirement for a turnaround.
Okay.
Uh, Madam Mayor. If I can address the other part of Councilman Palmer's hypothetical or- or proposal. We can't just waive the 10%. That's in our code. Like you stated before, if we wanna reexamine that and do 12 or 15%, let's do that. But you don't have a magic wand. You can't just make the 10% go away. They need to have at least 10%. I just wanna be clear, though, in what Josh is showing, one of the reasons that this open space is here is because it is visible from the public street that runs through on Tall Prairie Drive. It is open to existing open space in that project. So essentially you have a bigger park there because they're butted right up to each other, half and half, if you will, and it creates an open space now. Is there one corner? Oh, CJ, I can't draw. Um, it's okay. Just in the southwest corner, that potentially could, there could be some mischievous activity 'cause that one is sort of hidden, but for the most part, you can see this whole common lot there. It's totally wide open, e- both- both ways, from the common driveway as well as from Tall Prairie Drive. You can see 90-some percent of that common lot. So I just wanna make sure everyone understands some of that.
Thank you. Any other questions from council at this point?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Lo Roberts.
I'm kind of afraid to get off of open spaces, but, um, it was in the list regarding um, the t- quality of the, um, homes versus what was shown, if that would be, um, kind of actual type of quality. And I, if you addressed that and I missed it, I apologize.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman. Um, I spent a number of years as a real estate agent in the valley, although it's been a couple of decades. And, um, these are photographs of residences that ha- have been constructed in other developments done by this, by the applicant. So, um, we did discuss the quality and aesthetic elements of the homes in the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I guess I would just say that deviating too far from what is commonly accepted and expected and desired within a subdivision is deadly because then your houses don't sell and your lots don't sell. So it's in the developer's best interest to bring in builders who build houses of comparable quality to what's adjacent to the subdivision and that they aesthetically reflect the general theme of what's going on in this part of Meridian. So, um, although that's not a- a specific quantifiable answer, it does, uh, I- I do believe that what you'll get in the subdivision will be very comparable to what's going on around it because that's what the buyers and the real estate agents and the builders will demand that occurs in those lots. So if that's how, I hope- I hope it is.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burt.
I- I agree with, uh, Councilman Palmer in the sense that, you know, um, you know, if it meets the minimum standard, then, you know, then discussion is what it is. But I guess, uh, just my question to you, if you, if it- if at all possible, um, to speak with, uh, you know, your, uh, the owner, the developer, and see if there is a possibility of creating more, um, open space, then the minimum of 10% would be greatly appreciated.
Madam Mayor, Councilman, another possibility might be to add a second common lot that has more than just grassy area. So we'd have, we'd end up with two common lots that have, um, more formalized amenities located in them. And I would certainly go to bat with the applicant on that and just explain to him that it's- it's of his benefit to do so.
Follow-up, Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
So I- I- I don't know if you necessarily need to make another one. Maybe just add on to what you already have. And...
I'll do my best.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, Ms. Milam.
Since you're gonna be talking to him anyway about that, um, I'm a strong advocate for tot lots. I realize this is close to Bear Creek. I don't know how far.
A half a mile.
A half a mile?
Long ways.
That's a long ways for a four-year-old to walk. So, you know, if you're expecting to have children in this neighborhood, um, it's just a nice amenity that- that adds a lot of value for families.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for...
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we had Fred Tillman sign up against the project wishing to testify.
Good evening and welcome.
My name is Fred Tillman. I live at 3592 South Orkell Avenue. That's in the Kentucky Ridge subdivision. I'm one of those lots in the very southwest corner of this project, adjoining lot. Adjacent for me would be, yes, would be the, one of the 10,000-square-foot lots that was conditioned under a, I believe it was when it was approved for annexation before it was sold, that was one of the agreements. So there was a development agreement from what I've been able to read on the record. I'm not concerned about the 2,000 or 10,000 square feet. I'm more concerned about heights. If you look at these, our backyards slope gently down to meet this property.
So you're higher.
I'm higher, just barely. But if you look at the development in the subdivision that's put in, put just south of us, at the two-story facilities or ho- homes that have been built there, they completely dwarf Kentucky Ridge development, completely dwarf it with not only two stories, but with a lot of even RV garages and so on. So the concern I have is where you have, and again, I appreciate the fact, you're trying to transition to protect the property rights of not only those people that wanna change the use of the property, but how about the people like us who have built our homes, designed them specifically to take advantage of that, the view? And my concern is that that complete, be completely obliterated when I look at the kind of houses that are being built right next to us on the south side of the other subdivision. And with no condition or restriction on a height restriction there, um, I'm concerned we're gonna be placed in a very, very difficult hardship condition without some kind of consideration for condition of some kind of a height restriction on those, because I do not know how the lots are gonna be landscaped or, um, elevated or not, if they're gonna do, take a lot of it away and move them further down from us or what. I have no way of knowing that. And I- I do know the idea behind legislative efforts in this state to protect private property rights is to protect the rights of both people who are trying to change their land use, but also to protect the rights of all those of us that are adjacent to that use of the property. So that's my concern. I'm honestly not opposed to the project in any way other than I'm very concerned that we are gonna be damaged tremendously by losing that value of having that, um, view from there, which is what makes our homes all along there what they are. So if there's any way we could condition it to consider we have one-story homes or, uh, when I look at some of these RV garages too, I mean, they're- they're huge. And so that would be my request, that you consider conditioning, again, some way of alleviating that concern, finding that balance between the competing property interests here. Find a balance to help us maintain the value of our property by not having it taken away. Because once it's built, it's built, then the courts have a heyday with it. That's the only option we have. You have options available to you in, um, conditioning, um, with conditional views pronounced with the development agreement set. The other thing I would say, please, whatever you do, put it into a development agreement so that you and I both have some way that we can protect ourselves once this project has been approved.
Thank you, Fred.
So... So be happy to answer any questions.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Tillman, so I get more of the context because there's a million borders on this thing. What was your address again?
3592 South R. Carroll. It's in Kentucky Ridge subdivision. And actually, the corner lot, would you show that again, the very?
We see it. It's lot, is it lot one?
Right there, yes. And so the south side of my property also is the subdivision that you approved just south of us. I'm on a corner, kind of a corner lot right there.
Right. I was looking on the wrong side. Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Tillman?
Thank you.
I just might answer one, or mention one thing. Putting height restrictions is not uncommon. There's been a lot of develops where that has been used in order to find the balance protecting property rights of both. So it's not like you're, we're asking for something that's not been done before. But it would certainly, I think, help everybody that I've talked to. That's the biggest fear we have with the 10, I appreciate the fact that the 10,000 square foot was to help try to keep the property values the same. And I do believe that if you do restrict the height, 10,000 square foot is still going to give that developer proper space to be able to bid enough square footage, even on a single level, to get the value they want from the property so that he can be successful as well. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Neri, where the property's already been annexed, is there any kind of issues we'd run into with restricting anything?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, so all you have in front of you is a preliminary plat. So all you can approve is the plat as is or as it's been sort of redesigned as proposed or not. So you cannot place height restrictions. It is allowed to build at whatever is allowed in that zone. You cannot, there's no, if the development agreement on this particular property, that certainly could be addressed, but there's no obligation at this point for the property owner to agree to an amendment to the development agreement. But you can't restrict that. And Idaho does not recognize view corridors or view sheds or view easements as a right, a property right of any kind. So there's nothing unless it is on a deed or in a development agreement agreed to by the property owner who was annexed, there is no right of an adjacent property owner to a view access or easement or whatever. So, but at this point, all you have is a plat, so you couldn't place a height restriction on that. You could approve the plat or not and, and look for redesign, but you couldn't place a restriction like that at this point.
But could the developer offer to do so?
Absolutely.
Madam Mayor, if.
Mr. Burton.
Going down that path, if that was done, would a plat note get you to the same spot, assuming it was done by agreement?
Madam Mayor, members of Councilboard, yes and no. The problem always with the plat notes is those do tend to get overlooked more often than a development agreement. So yes, you could have a plat note. The enforceability of that plat note at a future point in time when a building permits issued and a property gets built may be more problematic on the enforcement end, but it certainly is a way to note it. It's not the most effective tool for an enforcement at a later date.
Is there anyone else who would like to provide testimony? Would the applicant like to have a wrap-up remark? And maybe answer the question of height restrictions? Phil, again, restate your name for the record.
Yes, ma'am. Penelope Riley, Box 405 Boise, Idaho 83701. The developer has authorized me to connect him with one of the other adjacent property owners with regard to a single-level home on a particular lot. I appreciate legal counsel's comments that, you know, the property's been zoned, there's an existing development agreement, and the homes obviously can't exceed the height limit that's stated in the Meridian City Code for the zoning designation. I will say in our defense that at the second neighborhood meeting, the first thing I heard from Mr. Tillman was that he was going to sue me for, because he was going to lose his view. So it's hard to be charitable and cooperative when the first thing you hear is a threat. So having said that, and we can move on now. And I don't know, I can't speak specifically for the developer's perspective with regard to doing single-level homes where it's appropriate and where it's desired by the adjacent neighbors. I will do everything I can to advocate for it. What I do need is to know specifically which lot is Mr. Tillman's so that I can direct the applicant towards the right lot that's on the other side of the property line. It's lot one. Thank you. I would be happy to address that with the developer and ask him for his forbearance. Or maybe I'll do a story and a half instead of a full two-story. There is some elevation difference. And, and we don't know specifically in terms of the groundwork, where the top elevation of the building pad will be once they get done doing their site work. And the maps I have this evening don't show topo on both sides of the property line. So if you would be so kind as to advise me on what route you would like me to take at this juncture, I would be most appreciative.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, with regard to what you presented with the commentaries or anything, is that? You're asking?
Oh, well, I'm asking about the height issue also.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
For me, I'd say, and understanding Mr. Tillman's concern, given the spot he's on to be able to have the view that he's got, if we go down the pathway of, I mean, we've, in pre, in recent conversations, discussed view sheds and whether we want to get anywhere near them. And I, I feel like we're pretty united in that that is a pathway we want to stay away from. At least for me. And how complicated that could be in requiring that because somebody built something next door, that's going to put a restriction on your property. I just don't know how we, I understand other states have done other things, but other states are in more trouble than, than often Idaho is and Meridian in particular. So for now, I, like you mentioned, you're going to talk to the developer and, and encourage all you can to, to work with neighbors and take whatever concessions he's willing to. But for me, I wouldn't say that council would, and legally, we can't try to put any restrictions on you.
I just hope you understand that this, this is an unusual situation where Kentucky Ridge, really, Mr. Tillman at one time backed up to some lagoons.
Oh, yes.
And I, I guess when you build in that scenario, you probably don't think that someday you're going to be looking at someone else's roof that you had a protected view corridor. So this is a little bit different because we had to annex this as part of annexing both Kentucky Ridge and Meridian Heights to get water and sewer in there. So it is unusual circumstances and I'm sure the property owners in Kentucky Ridge would all attest to they never thought they would have a house behind them. And certainly I realize there's no guarantees, but we also realize that those conditions were never imagined when we did the annexation and put the 10,000 square foot requirement there.
Madam Mayor.
So in most cases, we really advocate for, I mean, it's, it's nice when a developer says, yeah, I'll limit the height. But in this case, I, I would certainly be an advocate for it as well.
Yes, ma'am. Along the lines of our discussion about common lots, maybe placement of common lots in open space can be used as a vehicle for protecting people's view sheds, even though they're not formally protectable. So I guess I, and I apologize for elongating the hearing, but I'm just wondering if I toss out that if we move one of the common lots down along the southern border, then how would city council feel about that?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I think you've done a fantastic job presenting this, but, and you've addressed and, and acknowledged some of the concerns we're wrestling with, with this difficult property. You've, you've, and your client has agreed to, to meet with some of the adjacent neighbors and work on height restrictions. You've done a bunch of these types of projects and have come up with creative solutions in the past to make, you know, modifications to a plat that might do just what you're saying. I'd be inclined to, with the direction you've given, to, to leave it to you to try and address those concerns, table this plat, continue it to a new date, allow you to make those adjustments and, and bring it back.
Madam Mayor, I might have to come with a couple of missing appendages. I'm not sure I'd still have one arm and I'd be missing some stuff. We've had, we, we were continued three times at Planning and Zoning Commission. So the applicant has been very charitable in, in the continuances. I would, I would prevail upon you to maybe not ask us to continue it one more time. It's, it's, the development industry is such that it's so time of year sensitive that when, we've lost so much of the, of the season already. Maybe there's a different alternative. Your staff is excellent. They have great discretion. Maybe a condition can be put in there that we could work with staff to finalize the location of common areas to facilitate certain philosophical issues. And, and let me leave here this evening with an approved plat. That would, that would be greatly appreciated.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
No, I, I can sympathize with your position. You know, you don't, you're here with, without the developer, the owner here to, to help support you and to give you some advice and some direction. However, it's really difficult for us to approve a plat where there's some open questions. And that, that can, that, that puts the city in a, in a weird awkward spot. And so, does that make sense to you?
Madam Mayor.
Even in regard to the open space? I mean, we want to know where that, you know, where it's going to be. You know, we want to know, you know, you know, some of these questions that we've asked of you.
And we have great confidence in our staff, but I know our staff would prefer that there's resolute.
Madam Mayor, if I may respond to the councilman, I guess at this point, having spent eight years as a quasi judicial land use planning official in the past, I would take a more firm position and redirect and say, embedded in the R8 zone is a height limit that we will meet respective of what's going on next door. We have met the minimum requirement for open space per the Meridian City Code. So I guess if I was to speak firmly on behalf of my applicant and client, I would say I believe that we have complied with the intent of the code and that delaying the plat would be unfair at this point in time.
Respect that.
Well, I don't know what the entire council feels, but if they don't think that this plat will be a benefit because of the chopped up green space and, and.
I understand.
Which admittedly you said you, you could work to improve. It would be advantageous to go for a continuation than a denial.
As you wish, ma'am. I will, that's fine. I understand.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
So I guess another way of looking at it is, and I don't know how soon you can get this together, but if we continue it out a week, or if you're working with staff for a week, you know, it's still the same week in lost time. And we, we don't want you to lose any more time than, than is necessary. So how fast do you think you can get the changes about the comments that we've made back to us?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, there has to be.
Councilwoman, I think probably using conditions of approval as the vehicle for formalizing the changes that you're asking for. We wouldn't need to do a lot of actual on paper modifications. And perhaps you would disagree with that, but I think if you just state in a condition of approval that you want these items to be implemented as opposed to the way they're shown on the plat, we should have what we need without having to do a lot of redrafting. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
Mr. Palmer.
And before that question, it appeared that she was asking for an up or down. So, Madam Mayor and Mr. Neri, my question is, if, I mean, if she's asking for an approval, she's met the minimum requirements, what, how, can, can council deny a preliminary plat because we don't like the arrangement? Or if they've met the requirements, satisfied all of our staff and easements and everything, do we have grounds to deny it?
Madam Mayor, members of Council, Council Department, yes, you can deny the preliminary plat because it doesn't meet the, the desires of the council on the design, the layout, the configuration, where the open space is or isn't. Yes, those can all be findings of a denial of this preliminary plat. So just because they've met the minimum standards doesn't mean they automatically are approved by coming in front of you. The purpose of this hearing is exactly what you folks have discussed. Everything of those, if you're not satisfied, you can certainly deny.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I'm in an awkward position where my job is to advocate for what the applicant wants. I'm, I wasn't necessarily asking for a yea or a nay, a hard answer. On behalf of the applicant, I'm sure that whatever it is we can do to accommodate you, we will do to the very best of our ability. So if you'd like to continue it for a week so that we can make some, maybe sketch changes, but not manifest it on the plat itself, but to do some sketches that represent the changes that you're asking for, that would be fine. That would be fine. We would be happy to accept that option.
Thank you.
You bet.
So council, what's your direction?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
No one's heard enough from me tonight. To, to me, I mean, I, I think we're nitpicking on whether we think it's better to have a common lot closer to another planned common lot or that common lot be bigger as opposed to maybe the developers' expertise in knowing that, hey, if I spread out these common lots, making, you know, you only have to walk a block to be able to access a common lot as, as opposed to everybody at the southern end having to go to access multiple or one bigger common lot in the front. And especially where that, that southern one was an earlier concern, but was made clear that really is connected to another one, making that an even more valuable park space, common lot, open space, whatever you want to call it. To me, this makes sense in that reasoning and that there, there's access to everybody closer for the whole property. They've met our minimum requirements. They've dealt, had to deal with a super. They've dealt, had to deal with a super weird shaped piece of property. They've been able to provide the necessary accesses for fire and, and for our utilities. To me, this makes sense.
If I may, one more time, Madam Mayor. In your motion, if you do decide to continue or approve, if you would include maybe some verbiage on what specific elements I need to go back to the applicant with. We've covered a lot of territory. I'm not sure that I'm real clear. I'm trying to listen and not write. And so any, any direction that you can provide would be appreciated. And, and we will, of course, bow to your wishes, whatever they are.
Ms. Lynn Roberts.
Madam Mayor, probably one of my biggest concerns is the easement that was included in the open space because if it needs to be drivable, it's not going to be real usable, it doesn't sound like. And I certainly understand that we need access to it, but to have it be, you know, part of two parks and open space, I guess I'm concerned with having enough amenity there to really qualify as open space. That's included in your 10%.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman, there are some, some tools that can be used to mitigate at least the visual element. So I think, I don't think they call it grasscrete anymore, but there's some drivable surfaces that you can create that don't just look like an asphalt roadway. And with an open space, we have to be able to insert a 50 by 100 foot rectangle in any lot that's designated as a common lot. So most of the 50 by 100 square foot required area for the common lot in Lot 9 probably does not lay on top of that 30 foot wide easement. There may be some, and I apologize that I don't have those rectangles parked on top of the common lots. I suspect that most of the common area would not be impeded by the easement. But I did speak with a project engineer about ways to put in driveways that don't look like a strip of asphalt. So there are some options available.
Okay, any other comment from council? Or direction?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
If, if one week's ample time, in addition to Councilwoman Little Roberts' comments, you made the comment about the opportunity to, to add a second common lot. You used the phrase with more formalized amenities. I'm not sure what was meant, but, but if that is another option and if doing so, that might address whether it's Councilman Palmer's amendments as one way to create a solution for that southeast common lot. If moving or creating a second common lot in Block 2, Lot 1, or Lot 1 and 2, or either of those, just for examples, rather than have us necessarily redesign it, those are all comments that, at least I took note of, that, that you had shared as, I thought, creative solutions. So I would include those as.
If I may, Mayor, repeat this back to you so that I make sure I've got it. So you mentioned the addition of an additional common lot. In light of your comments about a tot lot, adding another formalized improved common lot, in other words, a tot lot, which came up in the discussion. And the third thing was maybe to add this additional common lot along the south boundary to achieve two objectives in one time? Am I tracking you correctly?
Yes, Madam Mayor, because I'm tracking you correctly, I think.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm sharing what I heard you say, which I thought, you know, were some creative ideas and I think it's a good idea to run with those. It seems to address a lot of the common concerns.
I just wanted to make sure that I was hearing you accurately.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Malin.
Well, I guess it wouldn't have anything to do with that, but there was also the, the comments of talking to your neighbors and, and I, I under, you know, we can't change your dimensions on your plat, but, you know, Mr. Tillman specifically has, you know, spent time and, and at least trying to, you know, talk to you. I don't know what happened. I know maybe he has, there's a little animosity in between the two of you, but, you know, it's worth a conversation and, and, you know, sometimes if you can do something that makes your neighbors happy, it, it pays forward a lot, a lot farther. So some of, some of, between you and him and their neighbors to take into consideration.
Madam Mayor, if I might respond, no animosity. It's just, one of the unfortunate parts of my particular job is that I have even been assaulted by, physically assaulted by neighbors. So it's, it's always a little frightening to go into those neighborhood meetings. I don't know exactly what kind of a response I'm going to get. And like I did mention, I did forward to the developer already comments from one property owner about a height issue. So this would be an add-on and I, I, I will address that absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further to add to Councilman Borton's poll-up points?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Appreciate your collaborative approach.
Thank you.
You really are trying to make things work, so hats, hats off to you. I would move that we continue item H 2017-0140 to Tuesday, March 6.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue this item to the 6th of March. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alise? Okay. Item 10A is under our Public Works Department with your engineering project flows-out presentations.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We'll try and make this as brief as possible, but it will take a little while to get through all the stuff that we have to go through tonight. So the Engineering Division is required to make an annual report of all the projects that we completed this past year as a part of the purchasing department policies. And so tonight, you're going to hear about the projects that were actually finished. Not all the projects that we worked on, but the ones that were actually completed in '18 as a result of the approvals that you guys provided during the budget process. So I want to start by introducing the team. So the Assistant City Engineer over the wastewater division is Clint Dolezby. He is actually not with us tonight, was unable to be here. But working with him on the wastewater side is Troy Thrall, who's a staff engineer. He'll be presenting to you tonight. Jared Hale, who is one of our project managers. And Christina Keith is our newest staff engineer on the wastewater side. She's got her hand back there. She won't be presenting to you tonight, but I wanted to make sure you knew who she was. She has recently joined our team and we're very happy to have her. And she's going to be coming before you in the future with some other things that she'll be talking about. On the water side, Kyle Radek is the Assistant City Engineer over water. He has, working with him, Dean Stacy, who's a project manager. Brent Blake, who's a project manager, and Garrick Nelson, who is a staff engineer on the water side. Also, Al Christie is our Transportation and Utility Coordinator. He would normally be here to present streetlight projects to you tonight, but it's his wife's birthday and he's recently married, so he decided that it was probably in his best interest to, to stay home and celebrate his wife's birthday, so I'll be covering streetlights tonight. So moving on, just want to talk real briefly about what the agenda is. So first, we're going to talk about water main extensions. And these are new mains that we put in. Then we're going to talk about water supply projects, primarily well projects. Then we'll turn to our focus to wastewater and sewer line projects, replacement projects, both water and sewer actually, because the replacements are the old stuff that we're, we're replacing and we do that a lot of times in conjunction, both water and sewer at the same time. I will then give a report on the streetlight project and then do a summary and then just briefly discuss or show you some key accomplishments that we, that took place last year. One of the things that I wanted to do, though, just for clarification, you're going to see a lot of numbers tonight. And these numbers relate to actual design and construction contracts. And the percentages, percentages that you see associated with those are relevant to the design and construction contracts. They are not the same thing as budget. And I'll go over that a little bit more in detail and talk about how that's, that difference is in the summary part at the end. But I wanted to make clear, you're going to see these numbers. They relate to the contracts that we, we put forward, but they're not necessarily correlated with budget. And I'll tell you how that works, but I wanted to make that clear before I turn the time over to Kyle.
Thank you, Warren.
Madam Mayor, council members, the first category of projects we'll present is water main extensions. These projects build or extend the water distribution system to improve pressure or flow, enable system growth, and service to new customers. We have three water main extension projects that we completed in FY 2017. Four pressure reducing stations were constructed in 2017 to enable the continued expansion of our distribution system. We put these together for the purposes of this presentation, but they were in fact four separate projects. The valves separate pressure zones while allowing flow between them for fire suppression or domestic service. These stations enabled the development of Bainbridge subdivision, TM Crossing, Bildmore subdivision, and Reflection Ridge subdivision. The engineering design was performed by the city, so there was no cost for that. And construction was performed by contractors and city forces. Construction totaled $76.4,000 and there weren't any change orders on the project, projects.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm Dean Stacy. And tonight, the first project I want to talk to you about is water main extension, Pen Grove, Astone to the Blowoff. This project consisted of designing and constructing 116 linear feet of 8-inch water main in North Pen Grove Way from Astone to the existing Blowoff in Pen Grove. This connection improved the overall water flow and reliability of the distribution system for the surrounding subdivisions. The construction costs for this were extremely low since the water, our own water department, Construction Division, performed the work of this project. And that's, the $14,000 reflects the materials only. So our, our design for this project was just over $20,000 and as I said, the construction was $14,000. The next project that I had for water main extension is Amity, Locust Grove to 610 feet east. Same type of thing, we're tying in two separate pieces of, of the water distribution system. We installed 620 feet of 12-inch main and also installed one hydrant. This was in South Meridian, along Amity Road. This connection improved the overall water flow and redundancy of the distribution system for surrounding subdivisions. And we had one sub, one change order that was required due to underground utility conflicts. So our total design for this was $14,800 and our total construction was 90,000, just over $90,000 with a total project cost of $105,000. Next, we want to talk to you about water supply projects that we have. These projects are Well 9 land purchase, Well 29, and Well 30. These projects provide an additional water source to allow more robust water infrastructure and allow continued growth within the city. We have three projects in this category. The first one was for Well 9. With this, this project actually consisted of purchasing 5,700 square feet of, of land, just to the north edge of existing well lot number nine. This purchase included, part of this project included relocating and providing new easements for power, gas, and phone lines. And this land purchase was necessary in our planning for well reconstruction in the near future. Well 9 has been identified as one of those locations that is reaching its expected lifespan. So there's no design cost with this and it was $57,000 for the purchase.
Hi, Brent.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm Brent Blake. I was a project manager for these next two projects. First project I did was Well 29. This project consisted of the design and construction of a test well, a production well, and a new pump house. Both of these, these well houses took three years to complete, all three phases of those. Well 29 is located out on the Oak South subdivision, which is out in the northwest region of our, our city. Total design cost on this project was $273,000. Total construction cost is $1.22 million, bringing the total project, project cost to $1.49 million. The Well 30 project, again, it's a three-year, three-year phase project. Entailed a production well, a new pump house, and a test well, of course. This project is located within the Reflection Ridge subdivision, which is in the southeast portion. Both of these project locations are part of our new pressure zone areas. The new pressure zone 1 is for the Well 29 project and the new pressure zone 5 is for, is the Well 30 project. What else can I say about that? So total design cost on this project is $192,000. Construction total was 107 point, or 1.07 million, bringing the total construction cost to $1.26 million. With that, I'll leave it up to Garrick.
Madam Mayor, members of council, Garrick Nelson, staff engineer. The next group of projects I'm going to talk to you about were projects completed on the wastewater side of Public Works. We completed one project out at the wastewater, two projects, I'm sorry, at the Wastewater Resource Recovery Facility, several projects with our lift stations as well. Our first project was our PLC replacements, PLCs 2, 3, 4, and our reuse PLCs. These components are part of our SCADA system. It's part of our automation and control. Allows us remote operation of our facility out there. It's kind of the brains of the system. So many of the components of the wastewater plant are tied into these PLCs, which feed back into that SCADA system. So we'll start off with our PLC 2 and 3 upgrades. We had a total design cost of $102,000. Construction total was just under $416,000, sorry, just under $417,000, for a total upgrade cost of $518.7,000. Our PLC 4, post-aeration and reuse PLCs, our design cost was $97,000. Construction total of $176.4,000 and a total cost of $273.6,000. Our next project were our lift station upgrades at our Autumn Fair and McHale lift stations. These sites are kind of on opposite ends of the city, one on the west, one on the east. This project included installing new pumps at the lift station, some site improvements, and then again, some SCADA control and communication equipment upgrades there. Our total design costs for this project were $31,600 and total construction cost of $258,100 for a total project cost just under $290,000. The next project were improvements at our South Black Cat Lift Station. You may be familiar with this as one of our two large regional lift stations within the sewer collection system in the city. As part of staying ahead of growth within the city, we needed to do some capacity upgrades at the lift station. So this included installing two new high-capacity 2,000 gallon per minute pumps, as well as some piping and wet well modifications in the lift station to accommodate those pumps and, and then some control equipment as well to operate those. For this project, we had a total design cost of $73,600 and total construction cost of $459,000 for a total project cost of just under $533,000. Our next project was out at the Wastewater Resource Recovery Facility. This was our Centrate modifications project and PLC replacement. This project included the demolition of our existing above-ground corroded our existing above-ground corroded Centrate Tank. This was near the end of its useful life. We constructed two new below-grade, below-ground concrete tanks with covers, total capacity about two hundred fifteen thousand gallons, and then we had to do some modifications to the Centrate Pump Station to reroute all the flows to the new tanks. So for this project, our total design cost was just under two hundred and seven thousand dollars, and our total construction cost was one point four-one million, for a total project cost of one point six-two million dollars. Our next group of projects are our water and sewer replacements. You may be familiar with these projects in this program. We typically target our aging infrastructure, deficient materials, pipe materials. We're also looking at things like fire flow on the water side, and operation and maintenance both on the water and wastewater side. So we're targeting pipes that are either towards the end of their useful life, or maybe they're in hard-to-reach locations that are in easements, backyards, alleyways, things like that. So we've got a list of projects we'll go through in this category. The first project is a sewer main replacement. This was East Williams Street. This project included installing three hundred linear feet of new eight-inch sewer main in the roadway. We also realigned several existing sewer services that were currently routed out the back of the properties to some alleyways. We reroute those out to the front to the new sewer main in the street. So this project, we had a total design cost just under twelve thousand dollars, total construction cost eighty-seven thousand, four hundred, and a total project cost just under a hundred thousand dollars. And I'll turn it over to Troy to talk about First Street.
Madam Mayor, members of council, my name is Troy Throll. I'm staff engineer. The first project I want to talk to you about is a sewer main replacement in Northwest First Street. We replaced, we put in eight hundred and twenty-three linear feet of sewer and about five hundred and twenty feet of sewer service line. This was in conjunction with an AC/HD project where they were replacing all the asphalt in the road. So we actually installed a dry-lined sewer, and we put the sewer services up to the edge of right-of-way, and the sewer will be put into service in a future project. The design contract originally was twenty-three and a half million, thousand dollars. We had some unused funds because construction went pretty smoothly, and we didn't need the entire services during construction portion. So the design total was sixteen point eight thousand. The original construction contract was a hundred and thirteen point five thousand. There were some unused funds from that, too, so the construction total was eighty-three point two thousand, for a total project cost of about a hundred thousand dollars. We also did a sewer main replacement on East Washington and Carlton Street. We replaced about twenty-one hundred linear feet of sewer main, and we replaced the sewer service lines to twenty-five homes. The total design cost on this project was sixty-nine point three thousand dollars. Total construction cost was forty, four hundred and forty-seven point two thousand, for a total project cost of five hundred and sixteen point five thousand dollars. I was also the project manager on the Five Mile Trunk Relief and Water Line Replacement at Eighth Street Park project. We installed about fifteen hundred linear feet of thirty-inch trunk sewer, fourteen hundred feet of twelve-inch sewer main, and some, also some ten-inch and eight-inch water main. The original design contract cost was thirty point five thousand. We ended up doing some additional work on this project. The original concept for the design was to put in a twenty-four-inch sewer trunk parallel to an existing twenty-four-inch. We discovered that if we redesigned it so that we had a thirty-inch sewer trunk that replaced the existing twenty-four, there would be significant cost savings. And we also decided to add a water line replacement in West Chateau Avenue to the project. And we, at the same time, since we were going through Eighth Street Park with the sewer trunk, we added a landscape plan to ensure that the park was restored to as good or better condition at the end of the project. So the design total ended up being sixty-nine point four thousand dollars. The original construction contract was eight hundred and sixty-eight point four thousand dollars. There was additional work there. That was mostly the, the water line replacement, which I identified before, and also temporary asphalt, because the, the construction season got pushed through the winter, and we needed to provide temporary asphalt to, so that the homeowners in the area weren't having to drive in the mud all winter long. So the total construction cost was one point zero-five million dollars for a total project cost of one point one-two million dollars. And I'll turn it over to Jared.
Madam Mayor, members of council, my name is Jared Hale, and I am the project manager for the water and sewer main replacement project from Fourth to First. On this project, we replaced sixteen hundred feet of eight-inch sewer main. We rerouted and replaced twenty-six sewer services. We replaced eight, five hundred feet of water main and replaced four water services. The total design cost was just under seventy-one thousand dollars. The total construction cost was just over six hundred and four thousand dollars for a total project cost of six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this project, water line replacement project in Heidi Place was to increase the fire flow and improve the services for the occupants. We replaced four hundred and fifteen linear feet of six-inch water main with new eight-inch water main. We also installed new meters and one new hydrant. And in addition, we installed three new water main valves in, in the main street there. The original design cost was ten, ten point nine thousand dollars. We have two point three thousand that we unused funds for a design total of eighty-six hundred. Original construction cost was a hundred, just over a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. We actually got six hundred dollars back because we didn't use some of the services in the construction. Total, total project cost of a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars.
Hi, Hal.
Hi. So this, just to talk real briefly about street lighting, the street lighting project. But before I do that, I made a major oversight when I was introducing the staff, and I forgot to recognize one of our most important and key people in our staff, and that's Tanya Converse, our administrative assistant, who keeps us all in line and makes sure that we get things done like we should. And I apologize for that. I was trying to hurry through that, and I made a monumental error, so.
Absolutely.
So there was only one lighting project that was actually completed this past year. There are several others that are currently in construction right now or in design and will be constructed this year. But last year, there was one significant project that was completed, and that was our, our intersection improvement project where we added new streetlights to five critical intersections along walking routes to Linder Elementary. The design was done in-house at zero cost. The fixtures and poles cost us about four thousand dollars. The overall construction to install that was seventeen point three. Total project construction cost was about twenty-one point two thousand dollars to add those lights and improve them, those walking routes to Linder Elementary. So now, I'd like to maybe change gears just a little bit, and talk about the capital improvement program in summary. So this year, we reported on eighteen projects. That may not sound like a lot of projects, even though that was-
That sounds like a lot of projects.
Well, it, the, one of the things that we don't actually report on these projects until they're completely finished. So some of those projects have, you know, been going on for three years with the various phases. But we report on them when they're completely finished. But one of the things that I think might be interesting is in that eighteen projects, there were actually over eighty contracts that were administered by the staff. So although there's not as many actual projects, that's a lot of actual, you know, contracts that are developed, administered, and closed out in order to make that happen. So I think that's rather significant. The total of our original contracts, as you can see here, added up to eight point six million dollars. The combined, combined cost growth, so you saw on the previous slides, there were information in there for, you know, additional work and change orders and other things that were included on those. So anything, absolutely anything for any reason that changes the contract time or the contract dollars, whether it be up or down, is, contributes to cost growth one way or the other. So some of those changes were a result of, you know, unforeseen conditions, like we saw out here this last summer with boiling sand out of the wastewater treatment plant. Some of them are, you know, we run into utilities that were not expected. Some of them are opportunistic. We find situations where when we uncover something, we realize, you know what, there's a valve down there that's in pretty poor shape. Wasn't included in the original contract, but it, you know, we better fix it now instead of coming back in the near future and tearing the road up again and, and doing it in the future. So there, there's opportunistic things, there's things that are unexpected. There's even some situations where we have errors in, in the plans and specifications. Usually those errors in plans and specifications, the costs associated with those are covered by the design consultants, but those are all contributing factors to cost growth. So this three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars for cost growth is the overall for the entire program, for all the projects that we just reported on. The final contract totals were eight point nine million dollars, and the cost growth is, like I said, four percent for the overall. Now, the one thing I said I would come back to, cost growth of four percent on the construction and design contracts does not equate to cost growth of four percent for the budget. So the vast majority, and in this year, two thousand and seventeen, all of these, this cost growth was absorbed, or was, we were able to, to pay those extras within the budget that the city council had authorized at the, for the beginning of the year. So they were, we had, the contracts had come in under budget far enough that we were able to accommodate all that cost growth without budget amendments or without increasing the overall budget. So I did want to make that point. I want to make sure you understood that that four percent cost growth in these contracts does not mean four percent cost growth to the overall budget. I also want to kind of point out that in the, in the construction industry, in this capital construction environment, cost growth of less than ten percent is usually considered acceptable. It's not, you know, great if it's at ten percent, but it's usually considered acceptable, and that's actually commonly used for a budgetary figure. You want to be within ten percent of your actual cost of construction. The city of Meridian, you know, and a cost growth of five percent or less is generally considered exceptional. It's in fact a standard or a benchmark that many people tout as what high-performing, high-performing organizations get to. So I want to make, you know, sort of shout out to these guys. I think they've done a very good job in maintaining that, that cost growth to less than four percent. And we have done that consistently. So we, we track that. Over the past several years, we have either come very close or far below, in some cases, five percent, as a, as a matter of course. So I think that's exceptional. Certainly, that's me talking, but I think if you, if you go and look, you'll find that that's, that's a very good number.
You guys should be looking exceptional then. I mean, look, like happy. Good job.
Late.
I know.
And this last number on here is something that we have, we've been tracking more and more. This has especially come up in more recent years through the McLeodry Audit and other things, and that is the design cost as a percentage of the overall cost of the project. So in this, in same industry standards, there, there are basically three phases or three parts to our consulting services. There's a, as a, a planning and conceptual phase, that's actually the one phase, then there's the design phase, and then there's the services during construction. So those three different phases contribute to the overall cost that we apply to the consultants, or that we have the consultants do. The general rule, the rule of thumb, is that if that falls between fifteen and twenty percent of the overall cost of construction, that's good. That's an acceptable number. If it goes over twenty, you have to ask questions as to why was it that high, but that's a generally accepted number. And as you can see, this year, our overall was fourteen percent. So I also, again, want to make shout out to the guys. I think they've done a really good job of trying to make sure that the contracts that we negotiated with our design consultants were fair. We were able to get, as a program-wide, some very good numbers for our overall cost of construction, or overall design as a, as compared to our overall cost for a project. So again, just want to point that out. We've reported on that every year. That's been something that the council has asked about. I think they've done a, they've done a really good job this, this past year in keeping those numbers in line with good industry practices. And then last, maybe just some key accomplishments. I suppose most of you are maybe interested a little bit in the South Meridian and what's going on there. You've probably noticed that the South Meridian trunk sewer project that's going down Meridian Road and through the Semplot property and around is under construction. It's going forward. Got all the easements finally, and it's going forward. They're making good progress, and it, you know, bar any unforeseen conditions, it looks like it's moving along quite well. We also have a water line project that's going to be going forward. It's, it's already started construction, and they're gonna start the next phase of that construction here shortly, and that's going down Amity Road and Linder Road back to Victory. So all of the projects that were commitments during the South Meridian annexation process are either in design or construction, and we have the necessary easements and so forth to make those things happen. So I think I can say with relative confidence that we're going to be able to meet all of the timelines that we had promised in those South Meridian annexation processes. The wastewater treatment plant, the water, the capacity expansion and headworks projects are also, I think many of you have been out there and seen, that, that place is torn up. And they are going forward as quickly as possible. I think our biggest challenge is going to be coordination with all the work that's going on, getting the tie-ins made, getting the shut-offs made, getting, making sure that the plant can operate while all that construction is going on. It's gonna be the biggest, biggest challenge. But things are happening, moving forward in a steady and, and good fashion. So I, I think we're in good shape there for now. I also wanted to just highlight, but it was already highlighted in the presentation, that we did complete two new production wells this past year, Well Twenty-Nine and Well Thirty. Both of those wells serve rapidly growing areas of town in the northwest area of town, and then basically in the South Meridian area as well, and Pressure Zones One and Five, which are, are expanding, are rapidly expanding Pressure Zones. And so with that, I would stand for any questions that you might have.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, Warren. So this is the third time that I've gotten to sit through this presentation since being on council, and just kind of run through the numbers in my head from previous presentations as each of the projects were going. Each one, I just kind of felt like, man, they really killed it on this one. Awesome, they killed it on this next one. So I, I was glad to hear your, your summary that backed up kind of the way that I, it was appearing to me. And so I, I, some of those products, I'm like, how the heck did they build that for that cost, considering how many things that we see and what they cost right now. So kudos to you and your team. Again, by the third time I've seen it, it's like, seemed very impressive. I kept waiting for one that was gonna hurt, like, okay, maybe he's gonna save it for the end, there's gonna be one, but that really killed us, but great job.
Thank you.
I'd say they all hurt. Any other questions or comments?
I, I'd like to, to thank you, Warren, and your team. I, I think you do a stellar job. I, I believe that all of the elected officials up here can say with great confidence that you work hard on behalf of our ratepayers and our, our future citizens, in making sure we do the right things and do them right. So, thank you. Stellar job. Exceptional. And all of the words that Warren said we should say, we believe. We truly do. So. And, and Garrick and I kind of had to smile on the, the lighting plan, or lighting accomplishments. Really appreciate that. And I think you know what I'm talking about.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, as, as one of those users of said water, we are also very thankful for everything that you guys do. Kyle and I work a lot together on these- Kyle and I work a lot together on these projects, and we're thankful for everything you guys do.
So, we look forward to the closeout report on Pine Avenue. I hear that we have some exciting things going on, being discovered, and all that fun stuff.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, and it's a lot of, it's a lot of expense, but it's the cost of growth. So, we're growing fast, and therefore, we spend money.
Yes.
But we try and do it smartly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, item ten B is under our Community Development Department, and Chris will be updating us on the Opportunity Zones.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. So, part of my role as the CDBG Administrator here is to explore other opportunities to leverage our CDBG funds with other programs, federal ideas, federal funding streams, other types of funding streams, and different ways that we can start to reinvest some capital in the community that can be leveraged with CDBG. A couple of months ago, this idea or this program kind of popped onto our radar, and we've been pursuing it, and the Community Development Department particularly, the Director Cameron, Brenda, our Economic Development Specialist, and myself, kind of wanted to present to you our plans, our ideas, and give you some more information, answer any questions before we move forward. We're not seeking approval for anything, just want to let you know what we're doing. So, moving into this, what we're going to talk about today is called an Opportunity Zone. So, what are Opportunity Zones? They are federally organized community investment mechanisms. They were created most recently in the Tax Cut and Jobs Act of two thousand and seventeen, so in December two thousand and seventeen, when the federal government passed the, the big sweeping rewrite of the, of the tax code. This was a provision that was included to allow for tax incentive for individuals who want to invest in lower-income communities. I'm not going to get into the exact mechanism that allows for this kind of investment or tax credit, what that looks like, how it's incorporated, or what exactly, or how exactly to institute that with your own finances or somebody else's finances. That's a question that I can answer at a different time. But really, we just want to give you an introduction to this idea, and then talk about what we're planning on doing in terms of trying to open some opportunity, Opportunity Zones in Meridian. So, again, this is, it's federally designated, so it's, it's managed through the U.S. Department of the, of the Treasury, and I'll kind of get into some more information about what that means, moving forward. But it's focused specifically on designating certain low-income census tracts, those that have a poverty rate of twenty percent or more, or a household income of eighty percent or less of the area median income, pretty similar to what we're talking about when we're talking about CDBG eligibility requirements. This is a, a pretty important local tool for investment that we want to make sure that we're leveraging if we have the opportunity to utilize this tool in our arsenal of, of reinvestment in the community. So, I think this, understanding what an Opportunity Zone is not probably gives us more clarity as to what it is. Right now, it's really just kind of two or three paragraphs in a huge tax bill. The Treasury hasn't defined any of the rules, hasn't defined the program, hasn't defined really anything beyond what's eligible and how you can get designated. But to give you some clarity on what it is not, it is not a government-run or overseen program. This is run through private organizations who invest private capital in private investments in designated areas of the community. There is no oversight. This is not a grant. It's not program-based or project-based, so it's very different from CDBG. This is really just kind of a, a more organized, federal-level economic development mechanism that allows for those with capital to invest it in certain areas of the community. It is, it is not focused on short-term investments, on short-term profits or short-term growth. Most of the, the incentives come after ten years of investment in an area, so there is required capital to be lodged in, in the areas that are designated for long periods of time. Again, there are no grants or any kind of clearly structured program for how the city gets the money. There is also no guarantee, any kind of guaranteed investment, that if we do get a designated zone, that money will just start flowing, or that there will be any money at all. That is up to the city, if designated, to, to go out and try to recruit and bring that capital investment into our community, similar to what we do now, just with more incentives. So, this is not a typical economic development incentive, kind of as talked about before. I'm not going to get into the details of that. But also, one of the great things that we really like about this in the Community Development Department is there are no caps or limits on the amount of capital that can be brought into these zones. So, there is ultimately an unlimited potential for these kind of programs if we get a zone designated in Meridian. So, how do we get an Opportunity Zone in Meridian? So, in December two thousand and seventeen, as I mentioned, the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act of two thousand and seventeen created this idea, kind of put it into play, and gave us some information, information about how communities with lower-income census tracts can apply. The Community Development Department over the last two months has been looking at the opportunities, trying to develop some priorities and a plan moving forward. We've discussed some of our ideas with the mayor's office, and also with the Idaho Department of Commerce, Commerce and the Idaho State Governor's Office. We will be putting in an application later this week, ideally tomorrow, that will clarify our stance, our priorities, and our intention to seek a nomination and designation for areas in our community. The Department of Commerce will review that application, as well as other applications from around the state, make recommendations to the governor's office and their Economic Advisory Council. They have until the twenty-second of March to make a recommendation to the U.S. Treasury, who will then make a formal designation and kind of formalize this program. The Tax Cuts and Jobs Act gave states and governors ninety days to review eligible census tracts, put together applications, make nominations and designations. So, it's been a pretty quick turnaround here. So, eligible census tracts, we're looking at the state of Idaho here. Anything in blue is just an inherently eligible census tract due to income levels within, within there. You can't really see Ada County yet, but we'll jump into that, I promise. But to give you kind of a statewide picture here, anything in that teal color are what are called eligible contiguous tracts, which means if they share a border with an eligible tract, they also can be considered for designation. So, the thing to remember here, and this is the key part, is that governors can only recommend for nomination, or only nominate twenty-five percent of the eligible tracts. So, of every colored tract you see in here, only twenty-five percent of those can be nominated by our governor, and then designated by the Treasury. So, there is some competition here. Now, we do not expect that every tract here will put in an application, and the Department of Commerce is requiring that every tract that is seeking a nomination put in an individual application. So, there will be some prioritization on each community's part, but also on the state's part. But there is some competition here, and we kind of want to, to paint the picture in terms of regionally and statewide, what we're competing against in terms of trying to get this designation. So, in the Treasure Valley, you can see the, the blue and teal here, and then on the right-hand side, you can see Ada County specifically, which tracts are, are eligible for designation. When we're looking at Meridian specifically, we have two tracts that are eligible, and they are in our downtown core. As you can see, the tract labeled number one goes from, on the, the west end of Meridian to Cloverdale between Fairview and the freeway, and then from Meridian, or tract number two, from Meridian to Linder, going west, and then from Cherry to the freeway. Those are the two that we have eligible. These aren't really new in terms of redevelopment, or community focus, or economic development focus that we have here at the city in terms of our activities, whether it's with CDBG or just with the work that the mayor's office and Brenda does. These are kind of areas that we focus on. This includes our downtown core, and a lot of the development that we're focusing on in terms of business growth. So, to give you an idea of the application that we're going through, again, it's collected by the, the Department of Commerce. That is due by Friday. We have, we will have our application in. It is decided by the Economic Advisory Council, will counsel by the twenty-second of March. And to kind of give you an idea of where we stand, we have, we have two census tracts that are eligible, as mentioned, but we feel they're very competitive, particularly because of the priorities that we've, we've learned from the Department of Commerce, the governor's office, and from some of our internal conversations. They're looking for, to designate and to nominate census tracts that have industrial zoning, which includes both of ours, shovel-ready projects that have been going on, that are going on, and that are planned to go on, which we have in both of those areas, good current infrastructure, which we have in both those areas, particularly when you consider the potential future use of, of the railway and whatever capacity that may ever look like. I make no comments on that, but there is opportunity there, and that is what this is about, again, Opportunity Zones. So, there is a, there's also obviously a current focused economic development need and projects that are going on, and plans to do projects in these areas. They're looking for a probability of actual and impactful investments, so the idea is that the governor's office doesn't want to nominate a bunch of rural communities that can't find any capital to be invested in them. They want to see areas like ours that already have lots of investment going into them, so that this can be another tool to help kind of catalyze the growth, the development that we're looking for in the downtown area. They're also looking for the probability of drop growth and positive financial impacts on the area's households. We see that particularly, I mean, in that downtown core growth, there is that second census tract that is mostly housing, particularly in that northwestern area where the schools are located, where a lot of jobs can be created in the downtown core for that, those who live in that census tract. So, I mean, in addition, they're also looking for eligible census tracts that aren't contiguous. Now, contiguous is technically eligible, but they're looking for those that are eligible in and of themselves. So, given all of these priorities that we picked up over the last couple of weeks, I mean, we check all of the boxes. This is a huge opportunity strategically for the state to designate an area that will cause greater growth and investment in our downtown core for the city, but also for the region when you consider some of the other amenities that we're talking about bringing in, we're talking about developing, and opportunities that exist in this area. So, next step, so we're submitting the application again, and then we're waiting for a decision. I, I don't know how that's going to turn out, but I want to project our confidence that we feel pretty good about this, because we, we kind of do have the key to the valley in a way, that if, when we can get this downtown core, if we can inject more capital into it, particularly private capital, capital and private investment, we can see a lot of, of growth and things change here for, for the better. Then, after getting, assuming we, we get the designation or the nomination, we will wait for federal understanding of rules about what it even means. We, again, there's a lot of uncertainty about what this is, how the mechanism works, and what burden or even role the city plays in general in this. I know that the Department of the Treasury is trying to do everything they can to just not create a program that has to be managed, just to create an incentive for reinvestment in particular areas. This has been an idea that's been tossed around for the last three years or so at the federal level, particularly in the Senate, has a lot of bipartisan support, and we're really excited about it in community development, especially if we can get this opportunity for a designation in our community. After that, assuming we get designated, we're assuming that the next step is just attracting investors, bringing that capital to the community, showing that investment. So, from twenty, summer two thousand and eighteen, assuming we get a designation to we have no, until we don't know when. There is no life term on these designations at this point, which is good or bad, but either way, it's exciting for us to know that there's this grand opportunity for this capital to come into the community. As we talk about the growth and the investment economically in the state, in our community, in the region, being able to bring and incentivize that money into the areas that we're already focusing on is just something we're really excited about. So, with that, I'll stand for any questions. I will preface this that I am not the technical expert on this. As I mentioned, there's not a lot of details. A lot of this work will, will go on, assuming that we get this designation through our economic development activities, and less so through CDBG, though we hope to be able to, to leverage some of these funds and support of projects that can come through Opportunity Funds. But any questions, I would stand for.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, Chris, thanks for the presentation. Just, has there been any, where it wouldn't be any actual federal dollars being used, but just kind of a tax credits and incentives would, yeah. If someone were to, to invest in a, in a project, whatever, might or might not qualify, would they have the, the requirements, like Bacon Davis or Davis-Bacon, however it's said, that come along with federally involved projects? Do you have any idea?
Councilmember Palmer, there is no official rule, but I can kind of give you what I've, what I feel in terms of what I've learned from different conversations with people who are presenting about this. To give more background on the actual mechanism, what this essentially allows is for private individuals or organizations who want to invest in the community to create what's called an Opportunity Fund, which is an incorporated entity, which then has to, I guess, put at least ninety percent of its funding into reinvestment projects in the community. This is not a 501(c)(3), it's not a federally funded entity. It in no way, shape, or form has any tie to a government, aside from the tax credit it receives at the end of a ten-year period. So, to my understanding and to the understanding of the people who have posed, who have been telling me about this and had these similar questions posed, there should be absolutely no requirement of Davis-Bacon or other federal requirements. I can't promise that. What the Treasury comes out with, I just don't know what's going to happen. But the intention at this point is to absolutely remove any notion that this is a program from the federal government, that this is anything more than the New Market Tax Credit or the, or the Fair Housing, or not Fair Housing, Low Income Tax Credit with less restrictions, less strings. So, with some of those other tax credits, you do see a need for Davis-Bacon or other kinds of, of federal labor requirements to be met. There's some talk that this probably won't be one of those kinds of programs, particularly if those other programs are managed through different departments at the federal level.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Lil Roberts.
First of all, Chris, I'd like to say, great job. You are just doing a wonderful job with all that we've been working on with this and some, several other projects, and I know that Brendan, Economic Development appreciates it as well, so, thank you. So, do you have any idea with this, what type of tax credit we're looking at? What comes to mind is a few years ago, we had an individual that was looking at personally buying a, a building that takes up the majority of a block here in downtown, and it sounds like there could have been quite an added incentive had this been in place then.
Yeah. Councilmember Borton, Councilmember Lil Roberts. I just don't, I don't know. I mean, I do know, but I, I don't understand it well enough to articulate it beyond what, what I guess I have. The technical aspects in terms of tax deferment, tax credit, other types of systems that are being created as an incentive here, I just don't know what it looks like in terms of, like, capital for the investor. I know that is pretty substantial, and a lot of the conversation, again, I'm picking up, this is out of my wheelhouse, is everyone's pretty excited about this. Beyond, beyond my limited knowledge of being like, really excited for potential, like, capital investment in, in the downtown area, these, this seems to be like a, a pretty standard, or not standard, but pretty extraordinary incentive for investment, particularly adding the, the lack of strings that is being projected at this point. I wish I could give you more information, but there is a lot of information online, and I'm sure that if we get designation, we'll be back to talk about it. But, that's what I have to say. I, I, Cameron, I, is there anything you, you want to say? Okay. I just, I know there are others who, who understand this more than I do, but, any other questions?
Any other questions? Chris, thank you for the, for the report, and good luck.
Thank you.
You.
Excited to hear how this turns out. Item ten C, Immunity Development, Transportation Priorities, Part Two, continued. Caleb.
Thank you, President Borton, members of the council. Let's just hurry up and do this while the mayor's out of the room, huh? So, it's actually the third time this has been on your agenda. The first time, it was like midnight, so we didn't even talk about it, but it was in your packet, and I was on the agenda. And I do want to thank the clerks, I'm not last on the agenda, so that's, I guess, a little victory today. But it is the second time we're talking about this officially. We, I'd like to get through priorities for roadways and intersections and community programs, projects if possi- if possible. We started to kind of talk about it last week, and you obviously continued it to, to today. Let me just pull up real quick a couple of things that we, that I have emailed to you, actually, a week ago. So, the first one being, let me close this real quick. First couple being, the Level Service Map. So, and I think in my email, I, I put something like, you know, think of it as a report card, right? As, Bs, and Cs are pretty good, Fs are not so good. So, red is roadways and intersections that aren't doing so well. So red is roadways and intersections that aren't doing so well, and greens and, well, primarily greens, but even yellows to a certain extent are generally better than the oranges and the reds. So I gave you a copy of the Level Service Map, as well as the project prioritization from ACHD. It kind of shows you most everything that's considered to get to adjusted cost-benefit ratio for ACHD, as we talked about a little bit last week. Just because you're number one here doesn't mean it's their most important project, and programming and budgets and all that kind of comes into play. But you can see when it's actually planned for construction, where it's at in the process, if they're in a right-of-way phase, those types of things, and the project costs and some of those benefits. So I shared those two with you, as well as a map that visually depicted roadways and intersection priorities as recommended to you by the Transportation Commission, and then you already had, but the associated list and more detailed description of what those projects are, the scope of those projects, and again, where they're at in the status, if they're in the five-year plan, if they're not, and anticipated cost. As Commissioner Ballard mentioned earlier tonight, using this far-right-hand column for just comments, that, they're not all mine, some of them are from the Parks Commission or other commissioners, Transportation Commission, but there are some notes here. The other thing that I sent to you was a letter. I didn't pull that up, but sent a draft letter. I didn't hear back from anybody, so I did give that to the clerk to sign, but we can talk about it if there are some tweaks now. But a cover letter that would go on top of a list, doesn't have to be this one, if you want to move things around. I know there were a couple of projects talked about. Sorry, I'm going to stop scrolling and just leave this static for a minute. There was a cover letter that, if you're agreeable to sign, did have some things to talk about that I didn't know if there were any questions about. I touched on funding opportunities and potentially supporting ACHD if they go after additional funding mechanisms for projects in the future. We do have an upcoming joint meeting, I think that was also talked about a little bit last week, on March 8th at ACHD. Really highlighted north-south this year, kind of in the letter. Typically, historically, we've talked a lot about east-west, because a lot of the jobs are in Boise, and people are, the mayor even kind of alluded to it before, our roads aren't just usually Meridian residents. We get 2C drivers, you know, coming through, or Kuna folks coming up and through. So this year really did focus, you know, more on three north-south corridors, which is kind of atypical for us. But, again, I don't have much of a presentation, just kind of bringing you up to speed of where we're at, and would stand for any, hopefully you got a chance to digest this in the past week or two, and I stand at the ready to make changes and send it off, or whatever you'd like to do.
Thank you. Caleb? Council, any questions? No questions. I think you've got consensus that the list as presented is good to go. There was one question I had in the letter, your draft letter to ACHD, that last paragraph opened with that sentence that spoke, alluded to the cost-sharing concept. Can you pull the letter up?
In the packet, CJ? Did you put the letter in the packet?
No, that was good.
I just want to make sure it was in the packet.
I had to pull it up.
Display it, if we can raise. Go in.
Is that the reference to perhaps cost-sharing, perhaps Councilman Palmer's comments a week or so ago? Kind of open the door for that, or does it mean something else?
It certainly can. It's not explicit in that fact. It was more to what I was, a couple of years ago in one of our cover letters, there was some realization that maintenance was becoming more and more of a, just a reality, less money for capacity and more and more, because more lane miles over time, you have to dedicate more of your funding to just maintaining what you have. And there was some sentiment at that time to look at additional ways to do capacity projects. So that is kind of in that same vein, but it could be perceived that way, or again, more explicitly couched or written that way, if that's what we want to do here. I wasn't quite sure, based on that discussion last week, if that's something, and here consensus to put that in the letter, so I didn't take too many liberties in that, but if that's what we want to do, then.
Madam Mayor. I didn't have any concern with it. I just assumed it was intentionally vague. Perhaps capture some of what you were asking about, so. We have consensus on the list and the letter, Madam Mayor, so.
Good. Need to leave more often. Okay?
Thanks, Caleb.
The item 10d is the city clerk's office.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. If it's okay, I'll just do it from here, because by the time I get down there, I'll be done talking. So, we recently received a letter from the U.S. Department of State indicating that the fee for processing applications, right now it's currently set at $25 per application. The U.S. Department of State, effective April 2nd, will be changing that to $35, so a $10 increase. That is the fee set by the State Department. However, it's collected by the passport acceptance facilities, of which we are one. So, in order for us to continue being a passport acceptance facility, we need to change our fee from $25 to $35. The reason I'm here before you is, in order to do that, it's a part of our fee schedule, so a public hearing would need to take place, and we would need to adopt it as a part of our citywide fee schedule. So in a few weeks, that's my plan, is to come back with a public hearing, but wanted to inform the council and gauge, just take your pulse, to make sure that we're on the right track, continuing down that road with being a passport acceptance facility and accepting that new rate from the U.S. Department of State. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, CJ. Council, any questions?
Sweet.
Okay, item 10e, you received the spreadsheet that we have. We do have a House bill number on the municipal court funding legislation. It's House Bill 643. And that's been assigned, believed to judiciary rules, yes. So I think that they believe that it will be heard on Thursday, but we'll let you know And I know they kind of like Meridian to not be there. They don't want it to be a Meridian bill. In light of comments that one of the representatives had in the discussion in Ways and Means, Meridian came into the conversation, and it's probably just as well that we're not present. So, have nothing else to report, but, oh, yes, I do. House Bill, the anatomical gifts passed the floor today, and it's headed to the Senate. The resolution was not heard today, but it is on the third reading list, or it's been off the third reading list, whatever. It's up to the floor to a vote when it gets to that order. So, we're moving to the Senate. And I can tell you, my act is thrilled. I'd like to thank Councilman Kavanagh for being at Health and, whatever committee that was, Health and Welfare?
Welfare.
Yes. Health and Welfare, and the kids just did an amazing job.
Nice job.
And in fact, the chair, Chairman Wood, mentioned that Avalon should give lessons on how to provide testimony to others.
Cool.
So, if there is nothing further, just under item 11, remind you that early voting has started, and it's in our conference room A. The police award ceremony is tomorrow at 6:30 at the West Ada School office, school district office. The Meridian Fire Chili Cook-Off is Saturday from 11:00 to 3:00 at the Meridian Speedway Dairy Barn, and coffee with the mayor next Tuesday at 8:00 a.m. at Moxie Java on Locust Grove and Fairview. And if that sounds familiar, that's J.C. Holman's place.
Madam Mayor, before the motion for the next item 12, when we get to that, could we also add 742061i as well? That's a misunderstanding on the nature of the discussion, and I want to make sure to be transparent that we add that as well, because it's related to the conversations.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
On 11, I just wanted to follow up quickly with you all to let you know, I'm targeting March 13th to provide you a status update on some of the things we think we've already addressed from the joint meeting we had with the Planning and Zoning Commission. By the way, I think I mentioned at that meeting, I thought it was a pretty productive meeting, but there were quite a few things left on our to-do list. So some of them, we're already starting to tackle. Some of them are probably going to take a little bit more time, but on the 13th, during your workshop, we'd like to report out on progress made to date and kind of the next steps from some of that dialogue we had with the Planning and Zoning Commission on the 13th.
We'll see if we can.
Sometime in the near future, then, if the 13th, doesn't have to be the 13th. Just real quick, the other thing I want to call to your attention is, on your desktop this week, you have, and this was also something that came, was discussed at the joint meeting, but you have a folder, an icon on your desktop, you should have anyways, Planning Documents. So those are a lot of the handouts that we have and give to customers. Most of them you're probably familiar with, but if you forget what zoning means, or what a mixed-use designation is, you have a cut sheet or a PDF that shows you that. It also has the future land use map, has a current zoning map. There's a handful, I think about 15 different documents or so that are there, just kind of a quick reference, glossary. ACHD, who's that? There's a glossary for you. You can pull it up, and acronyms and things like that. So you have that on your desktop there. Just know you have it there if you get into a hearing, and again, hopefully you find it helpful, so.
Thank you, Caleb. Okay, item 12 is executive session. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Do we go into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 742061b? Second.
I have a motion in a second to turn into executive session. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanagh.
Aye.
Alice.